We have to pause.
You missed, you missed your own.
Isn't it fun?
See, I'm not a text user.
No, no, no.
I apologize.
Okay.
But you're good, you're here.
Sorry, ma'am.
Well, it counts when you show up.
That was definitely not on intention.
What'd you think? What'd you think?
What's that? No, I was just saying, and thanks for that, what we talked about.
Please, sir, please, sir. No.
I'm just being high.
Yeah, 'cause people would call.
I'll do it tonight. I think I'll. I do my prayers silently, I don't like doing it in front of everybody.
I just, I'll ask, when did the first one? She can do it again.
Wendy, mind doing it?
I don't mind doing it, 'cause I need it.
Okay, thank you. I'm just being honest, I mean.
Yes, we don't want you to pray.
You know, we could be like this.
I think I'm pretty safe today to do that.
Okay. You got, you got my back? You got my back? I'll pretend that I'm you in my mind. Okay, I'll be ready to do it at the next zone. Bye.
You got prescription filled or what?
I'm sure my blood pressure feels up.
See, if you're gonna try and get your therapy on me.
Yeah. I need to, I need to let that, that blood loss feel up, you know? You got what? Oh, just a little bit, you can't see it.
Busy.
Good.
Thirty seconds. Sorry.
Hook up. Get ready. Okay. Still like the microphone, as it is over here.
I didn't card on us, but. They could've been lying, they could've bought it online.
Good evening, and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing. It is Thursday, June 23, 2022, at five, at six o'clock. Please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor to lead us in the invocation, and Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the pledge.
Stand in order, please. Father God, I thank you for having the opportunity to come, come back to you in grat, in gratitude and thanksgiving in the last thirty minutes, and I probably do need it. I just ask you to be with this Board of Commissioners as we work together to make decisions that will affect and impact all the residents of Spalding County. I ask you to ask, to be with us as we listen, as we learn, and as we understand what it is that our clients and our residents need. Also ask us, this Board, to have the courage and the strength to do the right thing in all cases. These things we ask in Jesus's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. For some of you, this may be the first time you're in this opportunity. I'd like to make sure everybody understands kind of the ground rules and how this works. To my left, the next four people are the county commissioners and then myself. Moving on around, Kelly Littlefield is the community development director. Next to her is our zoning attorney, Newton Galloway. On this side of me, on the right-hand side of me, is our county manager, Dr. Stephen Ledbetter. And on, next to, skip a seat, and then Kathy Gibson is our county clerk, who will be taking notes. I'd like to, we do this with certain people coming up as actions are coming up. In a normal Board of Commissioners, everybody speaks at the beginning. We will break that down so the people can come up when it's their turn, and we can stay focused on it. Public hearing. Persons desiring to speak must sign up for the appropriate application. When called, speakers must state their names and address, and direct all comments to the Board only. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters being considered by the Board of Commissioners on this agenda. No questions will be asked by any of the Commissioners during the citizen comments specifically. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. This county manager will keep the timer. You'll hear it go beep, 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 if your, when your three minutes is up. All right. Item, if you haven't seen, please keep an eye on the screen. It is exactly what's being presented in front of the county commissioners, so that there is absolute transparency on what's happening. Item E, new business. Application 2212 Sierra, Felix Jones owner, 158 Grizzly Lane, approximately 2.48 acres located in Land Lot 12 of the Third Land District, requesting a special exception to place a new manufactured home on property within the AR-1 district. Ms. Littlefield.
Yes, sir. This application was brought before us. This is 158 Grizzly Lane. It is approximately two and a half acres. The, we have spoken with the client and worked with them on the development of this property as far as the manufactured home is concerned. This is a Class A manufactured home. It's a standard, it's a standard special exception request. It's not due to any kind of hardship or anything of that nature. However, we have included, we have suggested approval. The staff does recommend approval of the application with some conditions, and those conditions are related to the proposed manufacturer home looking at more like a stick-built home, which is more consistent with the design of the area, the trend of the area. And those are things such as the materials, the exterior materials, the pitch of the roof, and also the underpinning of the front porch.
Ms. Gibson, can you get to the staff report?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Up at the top, first one? Yes, thank you. No.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak.
No, no, this is, this is just, okay.
Okay.
Let's find the staff recommendations. Okay. All right. Questions from the Board before we start getting into this?
I do have a question, just, you know, for the record. This is a recommendation that the Board of Approval, I mean, the Board of Commissioners initiated, but I guess my question is, do we have some specific requirements? I know we have it on stick-built houses, but in terms of manufactured home, I know you can, you can do hardy board and different facades for the outside, but how is that? We don't have that for mobile homes, modular homes, do we?
We don't have it specified in our ordinance for manufactured housing. However, the development of manufactured housing, the actual product that's produced has come a long way in the last ten to fifteen years, especially with the new HUD requirements that came out in, I believe, 2002. Whenever those requirements change to update, to make the houses much more energy efficient, and also the aesthetics of them much more pleasant, and on top of it, the fire rating of them. So, those, those variables contributed to the changes that manufacturers made in their, in their product design. We do not specifically have anything in our ordinance that addresses those design guidelines. However, these are the recommendations of staff to make the, to make the aesthetic of it fit more in line with the, with the continuity of design of the, of the surrounding area.
So, recommend approval, and you have five conditions, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the applicant's wife, I believe, is here. The applicant himself was not able to be here. However, she's a little afraid of public speaking, so.
Nope.
So, I would ask her to come up and address any questions if she is here.
Okay. There's no requirement to do that, all right?
Right.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion among the Commissioners?
The, the approval is with the staff conditions.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does the applicant have any concerns with the staff conditions? I'm, I'm just concerned because I've never seen us place these requirements on a manufactured home. And I'm saying they're not bad. I mean, if they're capable, if the home is not built and they can hardy plank it or whatever, fine, but if it is, I, I don't want to feel like we're adding extra cost to them when we've never done that to anyone else.
In the conversation with the applicant, these were things that they were already planning to do, so they were actually very happy that they were required as part of their zoning condition. In the event that anything fell through, this would be required of anyone planning to do this on, on that piece of property.
That's all I have to say.
All right, raise the bar.
Who's second?
Ryan.
No.
No, Ryan.
No, I did.
Ryan. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you. Item number two. Application 22-03 Sierra, LGI Homes, Georgia LLC, owner, 39 Smoke Road, approximately 279.69 acres located in Land Lot 20, 219 of the Third Land District, requesting a special exception to allow a conservation subdivision with 247 single-family lots. Ms. Littlefield?
So, this is a proposal to do exactly what the chairman said. It is, it is 247 single-family lots. We do recommend approval, and I believe there are eleven conditions that we have. They are focused on the exterior building materials, the landscaping, and also the, again, the continuity of design. We have the two specifications for the two-car garage, and also there are recommended improvements to Smoke Road. I hope I'm saying that correctly. The, also, we, we did include some amenities, some requirements on the amenities, and we specified the width of the roads.
Thank you. Okay. Any issues with the developer on this?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of.
The developer is here, and if I might give you all a little additional history, this is a subsequent, all this is, is a subsequent design and layout for a development that was approved by this commission as a result of a settlement agreement in litigation in 2006 or so. And the only thing that's occurring here, other than the conditions that Ms. Littlefield read out, is a reconfiguration of the lots that this commission approved, the number of lots the commission approved at that time.
Okay.
I believe there is a reduction in that number.
Okay.
Everybody, I, I think I have to recuse myself from this vote, now that I know the specific, specific location. When this came up the first time, not only did I know the owner, but I canvassed for him, making, getting signatures that would come before the then-board, and so I think, being that I was already on one side of this, I think I have to, I think I have to step out of this.
Okay. I understand.
Sorry.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, there are two people who have signed up to speak for this, for this item.
Okay.
Paul Mitchell. If you would, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name is Paul Mitchell. My address is 202 Triple Gap Road at Coming, Georgia. I'm an attorney for LGI Homes. I'm here representing the applicant, and I do want to speak just very briefly. Everything has been outlined well. This has been, this is the culmination of a very long effort. It stems from a 2006 court order, and so we are not asking for anything other than the approval of this revised site plan. It's not, it's not, it's not a zoning, it's not more houses, it's just approval of the site plan for 247 lots. I, I did want to make sure, and our engineers here, we, we have, over the course of time, submitted different versions of the site plan, and as we got down to the wire with getting the final plan in, I'm, I'm not sure that the one that was just shown is the last one that we submitted. It looks essentially identical, but I, I did just tender the latest and greatest site plan. It has 247 lots, and what I just tendered, and this is what we had, well, let me back up just a second. So, we came in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals on April 14th. The Board of Zoning Appeals recommended approval of the special exception application with staff, with staff conditions. And they added one condition. They added the condition that we, that we host a, or that we participate in a community meeting where neighbors could come and give input. So, that, that, that was me. I wrote some letters, sent them out by UPS, next day delivery, to try to, you know, we, we used the list of everyone who'd come to speak at the Board of Zoning Appeals. We invited folks out, and we held that meeting. I was there. Our engineer, Brian McCraney, was there, and Ms. Eva Morales was there for, for staff, and we did have a neighbor show up, we were able to have some dialogue. I've, I've handed out my cellphone number, and I've answered the phone when, when neighbors have called. Of course, we're just surrounded by a few large tracts, but we have tried to address the concerns, and what I just tendered, and what we had at that meeting on May 19th, were the, the actual engineered plans that show all the stormwater, this, all the stormwater infrastructure, shows all the, it's the grading plans. And so, I know a lot of concerns were what happens with all this water. We have sensitive wetlands there, we have streams that flow past this, and all of that is managed. Of course, we have a legal responsibility to do that, but now we have shown with the engineered plans exactly how we're going to do that. Normally, that doesn't happen until a little bit later on in the application and development process, but we've done all that. And so, we were okay with the initial staff recommended, recommended conditions as of April 14th. I have not seen in detail the, the ones that were just discussed, but, so I, I do want to talk about Smoke Road just a little bit. We went ahead and commissioned a traffic impact study. I got a copy of that yesterday, so I tendered that earlier this afternoon to the county. And in that initial staff recommendations, staff recommended that the developer, LGI, do whatever the impact, the traffic impact study said needs to be done, and we're okay with that. The traffic impact study says that there need to be right-hand deceleration lanes installed at the two entrances. We're okay with that. Again, I haven't been able to review what else there may be along those lines, but that, that is, I, I appreciate my time, and if you've got any, any questions.
Yeah, you're able to continue.
Yeah, keep going, keep going. You're, you're.
Well, what do you want to talk about? I, I've hit the highlights. Mr. Galloway and Ms. Littlefield both gave a very apt introduction to, to everything. Again, our engineers here, if there are specific questions, I know that there are neighbor concerns about stormwater, and he's an expert in that, and so, so he, he can talk to all that. And if you have any questions for me later, I'm happy to come back and discuss those. Thank you very much.
I actually think that Mr. McCraney is the next on the list for discussion. He's your engineer, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. McCraney, if you will, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Brian McCraney, 3510 Union Church Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. I'm here on behalf to represent our client, and really here to answer any technical questions on the layout that has been in flux. Again, Paul mentioned that we did meet with some of the adjacent property owners, and the plan that we're presenting right there has morphed a little bit to satisfy some of the concerns. The new plan that we've actually engineered incorporates a hundred-foot buffer around the entire property, bringing, you know, more area, you know, for stormwater runoff and to be able to push the ponds and all that kind of stuff.
Excuse me, nobody has this plan for us to see. I'm not comfortable with, we're talking about, there's another plan, but we looking at a picture of apples, but it might be oranges you're talking about.
I believe the latest plan was delivered to us late this afternoon.
Okay. All right.
So, that's not, I mean, we need to have the plan we're going to approve, right?
Right.
That's correct.
You have it, it was on your screen just a minute ago.
Was that the latest?
I thought he said that was not quite it.
It was actually the same plan, like Paul just mentioned. We met with the property owners, we had it a while back. I believe we met with Ava and provided it to her then. I can't remember the exact date. April 19th, maybe?
May 19th.
May 19th?
All right. So, let me just make sure. Is this the plan, Kelly, that we're trying to approve specifically?
This is, we have engineered this plan. This is not the plan we want to proceed with because of the concerns with adjacent property owners.
Okay. So, he said he submitted the plan this morning. Did you submit when this morning?
No, we submitted the plan this May 19th. It was a while back.
Okay.
The track, yes, ma'am, the traffic impact study was actually submitted today, because we just received it two days ago.
Yeah, this, this was the only plan that we have in the file. So, if there's a new plan, then it's not currently in the file.
So, so, that's, that's my problem. The other thing is, I have a few questions about the traffic impact study, because I know that area is very rural in terms of Smoke Road, and I can't really see from this design where the other houses are in, in regards to, and that's just because we maybe need it bigger. The traffic coming from Smoke Road, do you, do the normal residents, do we pass by their houses and then get to the subdivision, or does the subdivision come first off Smoke Road, and then you get to the houses there that are existing? And I know you say you have the traffic count studies, but is, is Smoke Road kind of skinny? I mean, like, we have problems with emergency vehicles coming down there.
It is.
So, if you're adding 247 houses, 2,000 square feet, at least two cars per home, maybe working people several trips a day, that's like a huge amount of traffic that's going to be on that one road. Going out to where? To Vineyard Road, to Teeman Road? Not that it's your fault, I'm just saying I need to be able to see that before I'm okay with that, because it's not on this paper right here.
Can I speak to that just for a second? So, I, I am not the quote-unquote "traffic engineer." However, I do know enough to be dangerous. The traffic impact study will outline the trip generations to and from the development, and it would be outlined within that report, what the proposed turns would be to and from the development.
Do we know when we'll actually have the plan that we are trying to approve? When will we have that?
I believe it is.
I think they're trying to bring it up. I have it right now.
Okay.
This, this particular plan right here, you can see the borders, is what we worked really hard at doing, is pulling everything in, condensing it, still keeping the, the open space we need for the conservation zoning, and we feel this is a
What, where, yeah.
Better, better layout than the original we had. There are three existing ponds on the property, too. The proposed plan is not to really utilize any of those for stormwater, so we'll be adding six, I believe, separate stormwater facilities outside of those existing ponds, and the plan is to leave those existing ponds as. And the plan is to leave those existing ponds as is. One at the southeast corner, one right in the middle, and one kind of to the east at the head of the creek there.
Okay, just, just so that everyone knows, this plan that he's showing now was in the packet and so was the original one. So it looks like we just brought the original one up, not the one that was also included in the packet.
So on that drawing there, is Smoke Road on the extreme right side of that?
It is.
Yes, Smoke Road will be on the right-hand side. You can kind of see where it deviates away.
And, and, and what's the nearest close, God, I can't read that. The nearest closest major road artery to Smoke?
Teeman.
Teeman.
It's Teeman.
Yes, ma'am.
To the south of the, south of what we're looking at now?
So if you pull the, the other map back up, Ms. Kathy. This property actually abuts Sun City Peach Street.
Okay, so that's why you're able to get community service sewer?
Yes.
All right, so I'm just trying to worry about people getting in and out.
Well, and to speak to that, I've been working with community, I've been working with the sewer that serves Sun City for over a year now. And we've got a pump station design for this ready to go.
So off Smoke Road, you have the ability to go to Teeman or the ability to go back to Mackintosh?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
And just so, just so to refresh your memory on this, the number of lots was fixed in the consent order. And that lot, again, the only thing that's being changed here is the lot configuration. The approval and resolution of that case was contingent upon them reaching an agreement with community services to be able to access service, sewer service.
That's correct.
That mean we can't ask questions?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It does mean that we are constrained.
In what we can, what we're supposed to do. Yeah, okay.
All right. We have one more. All right, we have one more speaker. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Josephine Scott. Ms. Scott, if you would, please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Joe. Josephine Scott, 1906 North Second Street Extension. Okay. We own the property. I do want to thank you for letting me speak and thanks, Mr. McCrany.
Go back.
Please leave that open one out. Okay, we own this corner of property here. And, okay, my concern is, okay, since, since this is really just about been decided, I am just, okay, I own or we own property here that hasn't been timbered and, well, we haven't timbered it, the people before us hadn't timbered it, and it is a continuation of this flood zone. And it has just all kinds of natural, you know, red oats, white oats, big leaf magnolia, ironwood, beech, all kinds of, of natural vegetation. And what they are going to do here, because Mr. McCrany was very nice, and we see the master grading plan, they are going to be bringing a big sewer line here. The sewer line is going to come, maybe, maybe down the road and then come down here and across, across this 100-foot border. And I just really want some good native screening, to screen, like, I'm going to be, if I stand in my property corner, because this is some of the prettiest natural area on my property that has never been timbered in, well, probably over 65, 70 years. And has a lot of, you know, witch hazel, buckeyes on it. And I would like to keep it as natural as possible. And when I stand here in this corner, I will see this road and then whatever is called a landscape buffer, I want excellent buffering. And then, like, they don't label this, we also own this property here, this is, they're going to, I guess, leave that natural, you know, just the natural buffer because it hasn't really been timbered either, our hillsides have come into here or that way. And I guess about the other condition that the previous planning and zoning was that all sewerage would go off property. And following, the pumping station is right up there, so, and it just, it's hard to tell where it's going from there. So I'm just really here asking for a lot of good buffering naturally. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Scott, all right. Any issues with that from the developer? From the attorney, from the engineer?
I, I don't think so. And, and we've had a chance previously to, to dialogue back and forth. Again, especially now that we have created the engineered grading plan that shows how we're managing all the, all the stormwater. That is correct. Everything there on, on the left-hand side will remain in its natural state and we are preserving as much open space and green space as we can.
Okay. So should that be added to a condition?
Ms. Littlefield?
My recommendation on buffers has always been that all buffers that are disturbed in any capacity, if they are, if they are delineated as a landscape buffer or as a buffer between parcels, my recommendation is always that buffers be variegated in their planning, no more than 30% of any one species and all native species to Georgia.
Okay.
No brad repairs.
That's not a native species of Georgia, sir.
We should make it a requirement that they burn down all brad repairs on the property.
Ms. Scott, that, that take care of your issue, Ms. Scott?
None of this one.
Okay, all right.
We do need to, we do need to make certain that this is conditioned upon approval of this site.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yes, okay.
So the little black and white check marks are the 100-year flood plain, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is kind of an engineering question and an us question at the same time. What is the situation when we, there's a subdivision and we end up taking ownership of the subdivision and the road clearly either crosses water or crosses the flood plain? Is there, you know, I'm saying, if we further, we get down the road, is there something special that you do to the road so that down the road, we don't have the road falling in at that point? Or have we had a history of anything like that, Newton?
I'm, I'm not a, we have had problems with, with road deterioration after particularly early on, back when there were issues with, with bonding for those roads. Recently, I am not aware of any particular problems related in, in newer developed subdivisions tied to that, though we haven't had a lot of new subdivisions since the recession. But I'm, I'm not aware of any particular problem that we've had with that.
So everybody in the audience understands, we're talking about roads that in the end belong to the county or the county will take care of. And engineers build them and then turn them over to us. And the next thing we know is the flood plain is there and then we're stuck with that problem. So engineer, comments?
So we do have one creek crossing right there. Again, this, this plan has had several iterations. That particular crossing has been there since I've been involved with the project. October of 2020 is probably when we started. We've submitted and have a nationwide approval for that crossing already. And it will be engineered to, to be able to handle 150% of the estimated flows for the 100-year. And that would be, you know, in culverts under the road.
Okay. Does that answer it? All right. Any more questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, application 22-03S on LGI Homes, Georgia LLC, owner 39 Smoke Road, approximately 279.69 acres located in landlot 219 of the third land district, requesting a special exception to allow conservation subdivision with 247 single-family lots. I'd like to make a motion to approve that along with the special, the conditions. We will add a condition, which is the 11th condition, which will include the buffers.
And the 12th condition would be the site plan?
The site plan, yes.
Okay, I have a motion. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero?
Four.
Four, four, zero. With one we're two. Thank you, that's right. All right. Item number three. Okay, excuse me. Application number 22-04 Sierra, Olin D. Hunter, senior, owner Big Peach Property LLC, agent for 1710 Zebulon Road, approximately 2.14 acres located in landlot 120 of the second land district, requesting a special exception to build and operate a car wash within the Tri-County Overland District. Ms. Littlefield?
All right, so this is a car wash that's being requested out on Zebulon Road. Staff does recommend conditional approval. Most specifically, which is, this is a variation in a, a local condition, that this special exception not be transferable. And that, that is, that is a recording process and has to be specified in the conditions. We also recommend that this not be fully approved until there's GDOT approval or sewer capacity approval. The applicant is here to speak to the, to the car wash itself.
This is like next to the Waffle House, this right there, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Is there someone to speak?
Wes Cohn?
Mr. Cohn, please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Wes Cohn, 131 Park Drive, Forsyth, Georgia, 31029. Appreciate you guys letting us come here tonight. We're excited. We, this is our car wash we built. I'm one of the owners and I've got some of my team here tonight and our civil engineers here as well, but I don't know if you guys have seen, been to our wash in Forsyth, but we just built it about a year ago. We've got one in Jackson coming up, one in McDonough. And geographically, this is a really good spot for us. We've been working on the spot for a long time, so we're glad to be here tonight to hopefully get our final approval. I got a, just a little presentation to show you guys, just kind of what our company's about. So that should play a little video for you. This is just some drone footage of our operations. So, so we're an express car washer. We're not full service, but this is where, you know, we take care of the outside, you take care of the inside. So we, we send quite, quite a few vehicles through. We do the unlimited plans where you can come every day, starting at 20 bucks a month. We are a faith-based company, so we spend a lot of time in the community. We do a lot of things inside the community with our sports teams, school programs, local families in need. You can see when they come through the wa, this is on a Saturday. Stay, stay pretty busy on the weekends, but come through the wash, they can either vacuum or they can come straight out. I'm sure most of you guys have been through these before.
Is that in Forsyth?
Yes, ma'am. You've been there before? You got, you got to come check it out. Oh, yeah, I got y'all some air freshener, my bad. I didn't bring enough, I got enough for the people that can vote.
Okay.
Good to see you in person this time.
Give it to Dr. Steen.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
You'll get, you'll get one of it.
Thank you.
All right, you, you can go to the, all right, so this is just some of our team. So on the left side, that's Mr. Ron. He's our director of customer service. So D1 football, running back from University of Wisconsin. He kind of leads the charge on training our team for all their customer service. I come from Publix. I worked at Publix through high school and college, so customer service is ingrained in my brain. And so we're all about experience. So those are some cool pics of us at the wash. So we give out air fresh, we probably give out 5,000 to 6,000 air fresheners a month. So every time you come, if you want air freshener, you get them. We have all kind of cool, different flavors and people, people love those. We do, so we wash patrol cars for free, city and county. And we, we are very pro law enforcement and we also like having law enforcement at our business, so. We do a lot of community programs. So this is one of our special education groups. They come to the wash every week. This group is really, they're in a room all the time, so they look to, for businesses where they can kind of, you know, get out and experience what's going on in the community. So they come every week, help us fold towels, fill out spray bottles. We have them at the kiosk helping talk to customers. So we partner with the high school and we're the number one work-based learning company that students try to go to. So that, that's how we like it. So we start our employees off at part-time at $10 an hour and our full-time at 12. So it's, we're kind, pretty much in this industry and kind of with what high schools have access to, highest paying. Our GMs make over 100,000 a year, so we're a pretty high-paying company and our assistant managers do pretty good, too, so.
How many people are you planning to employ at this location?
So, so we employ 20 to 22 per wash and we probably half are full-time, half are So I don't know if you guys heard about this, we did a Hynick Car Wash in, last year and went viral on TikTok. We had over 2 million views and we had folks coming from Florida, Tennessee, all over, but we sold out every night. There's some, one of those is a video I think on the left side. But, yeah, so, so we had actors that were in the, in the parking lot when you pulled up and you actually got your car washed, too. So we had people inside the tunnel. We, we gave 100% of our proceeds to, we had one family who's lost a little girl, three years old, and then we donated to the Future Farmers of America, FBLA cheerleading team. So again, it was just kind of a community event and it's something, some, a way we like to give back. All right, you can hit next on that. Thank you. So one cool thing we do for our team is every quarter, we have a team event. And so, you know, our philosophy is, is our, our team members can't bond at work if they can't bond outside of work. And with high schoolers, you know, it's kind of clicky in high school, so they're working with people they probably don't hang out with at school. So we try to increase that, you know, their ability to work together. So every quarter, we'll run out to bowling alley, they're going to Topgolf next week, but just different things inside the community. So whenever, like, we come here, we'll go to local businesses, you know, and support them, but just a good way for our employees to spend time with their coworkers and their, and their families as well. This is just, so some awards we've gotten and then we love, it's all about customer service. So that picture on the left side, you can see a smiley face in the soap. So our loaders are required in the tunnel to write, write something on your windshield. So if it's Valentine's Day, you're getting a heart. If not, you're getting a smiley face, you're getting something. So that's just something cool and creative that we try to, you know, make our customers Just some, just some other good, good reviews. We have a heck of a wash. We, we spend, our equipment's a million, 1.2 million dollars just on our equipment. So we've got the best equipment. It, it's going to put out a clean car. And this is just, so every quarter, we have a spirit day and we commit to do that at every wash we build. So every quarter, local family in need. This is two different families. Both of the kids that are with our mascot have cancer. And so we donate $5 a car for every car that comes through that day, even for our Unlimiteds. It's like, you don't even have to pay anything. If you're on our plan, you just come by. We raised like $17,000 in two days for those two families. So that's something that we commit to do and.
That's a lot of car washing.
So that may be it. Is that it? Yeah, I don't know if y'all was going to prove it without me showing y'all that. I just kind of wanted to tell you guys a little bit about, about what we're about, so.
I, I do have some questions if we can.
Yes, please.
I noticed that you're kind of requesting entry, are you requesting entry off Zebulon Road or off of 19?
You guys want to talk about that? I'll bring Robert Moore, our civil engineers, here to talk about that.
Hey, how are y'all? Robert Moore, 1595 Unidilla Highway, Hawkinsville, Georgia. So we're requesting access off of the state route and not off of Zebulon.
Off of Ford, is that like the, I call it the Barnesville Highway?
That's right.
So there's all way, already kind of a, what do you call it? A D cell lane off of, off of that? It's a D cell lane on the other side of that gas station, so y'all will come in behind the gas station, right?
We will come in just down the street from the gas station. So there, at the, close to the Waffle House. So there, there's already an existing curb cut there that serves this property.
Oh, okay, well, I just, when I was looking on the map, it looks like part of it's on the front on Zebulon Road and the other side is on Highway 41. So I didn't know if you were going to try to, obviously, people are going to try to come in off 19, but also on that other side.
No, there's only a connection on 41.
Okay.
If, if we could pull up the development plan? If, if we could pull up the development plan, Ms. Kathy?
Yeah, that would help me out tremendously too.
Yep, yep, that's okay.
Good job.
And I may be saying it backwards.
I think you are.
Yeah, it's coming, it's, it's entering from the side with the Ingles.
It is.
That's correct.
Okay, not from the, the main highway.
The way, the way going to Zebulon is where you enter.
Okay, I got my roads swi, flipped.
And will you, will you exit off, in that same place?
That's right, so you'll basically go through the site
And then come right back out on the straight.
Then they come right back out on that same entrance.
But no access off that backside?
No.
Okay, all right.
All right, any other questions first? All right, so I have a motion to approve?
Hang on, we've got one more, Todd, Todd Rivers?
Oh. I'm Todd Rivers, uh, one of the business partners with Big Peach Car Wash. So, I do all the building and construction and all that good stuff. And one of the concerns...
Mr. Rivers, we need your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Todd Rivers, one thirty-one Park Drive, Forsyth, Georgia. Um, so one of the concerns that came up, uh, was access to the sewer. And we've got a letter from Brandon Lewis, which is Director of Watershed Management. And, uh, says, "Mr. Moore, although to see the Griffin sewer infrastructure existing on, uh, on and adjacent to the subject property, there is currently insufficient ca, capacity to provide sewer service to the property at seventeen-ten Zebulon Highway at this time." So, we, we've known that from the beginning, that there was issues with sewer. Um, technology, uh, has changed a lot in the car wash industry. And we do use what we call reclaimed water. So, what, the water that we use in the wash does, we, you, we re, we clean it up and then we reuse it and just keep reusing it and it saves on water and it's a lot greener. And, so, they have come out with a technology now that has zero discharge. It's been, they, they have one that had about ninety percent reclaim, but now that, they've got one now that's a hundred percent reclaimed. And so, we're going to use that, um, process here on this facility. So, we will not have to have a septic system for the actual wash itself. It will be done through reclaim and then we'll have a tank, that, that tank will become and pumped out on a, you know, a regular basis. And then they'll be taken off-site to wherever. We will have to have a small system that will accommodate our one bathroom that we have. And our bathroom is for our staff, we really don't have public restrooms. So, uh, and we have had this, the soil analyzed and everything and it does perk and, and then all that, you know, shouldn't be an issue with that, so.
So, so other than the one bathroom, you guys effectively won't use the sewer system? Is that what you're telling me?
That's correct, yeah, because, yeah, we didn't have capacity and we wanted to modify something to where we could accommodate and not put a burden on the, the county.
All right, so septic tank to take care of the one bathroom and then you're taking care of your water, recycling, basically redoing your, okay.
Yes, sir.
Does that still fit?
I, I don't know anything about that.
I mean, neither, I've never heard of it.
So, so I've worked with two of these systems in the past. I've seen one that was horrible and I've seen one that was amazing. Um, and, and that is my experience with them. The, these systems are overseen by the Health Department. Um, and they are tested, uh, for the first, I believe it's two years, whenever they go in. The soil around it, there is, um, there's a testing module that happens for the first two years to ensure that the system is complete. And there's also ongoing water quality to show that that happens. And it's the same water quality testing that you use in your pool. If you have a pool.
So, your bottom line is...
I'm, I'm not aware of any system like this currently in operation in Spalding County. That doesn't mean there's anything wrong with it. And my assumption would be, it would have to be approved from the Health Department, just like a septic tank would be. Is that what your experience is in getting a, somebody has to approve it?
So, the only approval that we will need is just for the septic system for the bathroom waste. And that's it. And that's a one bathroom waste system, it's a very small system. So, we'll have a s, a normal-sized septic tank with a drain field for that. And the system that you were speaking of, that you said you had one that was great and one that was not, what, what was that system for?
One was for a car wash, the other was for a grocery store.
Okay.
The one that's not so great was for the grocery store.
Right, so what Todd is stating is that we won't need that type of system, that it has to be tested. We will have just a generic septic system with a drain field for bathrooms only. It, there will be no car wash discharged water into the septic system. Because this is a one-hundred percent reclaimed reused system.
Robert, I think they were asking specifically about the reclaimed water system. How does it work and, and what are the, uh, the issues? Yeah, the safeguards around that reclaimed water system.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's what, uh, the commissioner was asking.
Okay.
So, the, the reclaimed system, so basically what does, I mean, the wa, the freshwater comes in initially, we have holding tanks and when cars come through and we wash them, you know, we, we use water. And then, uh, the water goes into a trench. And then from that trench, it goes out into different septic tanks, if you will, that help get the sediment out of the water. And then we pump those, so all reclaimed systems have those three tanks and have an oil-water separator if they go into a sewer system. So, our, this system here would have those three tanks. And then the water would come back into the reclaimed, so it's a closed system. It would come back into the reclaimed system, it would clean, they've got different polishers, which they do everything with centrifugal force versus chemical. They have one that was chemical, but they have not, it, it hasn't been doing well. With centrifugal, they've had this hundred percent system, uh, in, in testing for about a year in about eight different locations. All the locations are, you know, doing real well. And you have filters and stuff you have to clean in, in those, you know, once a week and just different applications like that. And then, there are some particles that will come out of that and discharge, but they'll go into like a two-thousand-gallon septic tank that will sit up right outside the building in the ground. And then we'll have a company come in and pump out that tank. But typically, depends on the volume of car, typically that's something that has to be done about every six weeks. You know, we'd have outside company come in and do that. So, there wouldn't be a drain field attached to it at all. It would just be a tank and then they come and pump and then let go.
This is the first time we've done this in the county.
Yeah.
Kelly, we need to make sure that part of this is that the Board of Health gets involved. Newton, you, you, yeah.
Can we?
So, we need to make, uh, that they are advised and asked that they check this thing, uh, a requisite number of times over the first two years to make sure we understand. And that, I believe Kelly, that's, I think, who does it for us, is, uh, also approving these plans as we go through. So, the Board of Health has already taken a look at this the first time, uh, but we would need...
Is this a trend also, I wonder, is this a new trend?
I'm sorry?
Is this, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, but I'm wondering, is this a new trend that we're gonna be seeing?
So, I, I don't feel comfortable, I, I would like to be better educated on this. I've heard of this before, but when I hear you say that there is going to be water sitting in a tank, you know, waiting for somebody to come get it, to me, that's refuse. And, you know, how is a tank supposed to be built, is it gonna be sealed, does someone, I just feel like I need to know more.
The concern would be...
I mean, it's, in theory, theory, it sounds good, but you know, you're the planning and development lady and you only seen two. We're the board, we've seen none. I, I just would feel more comfortable with more information about it.
Those tanks leak.
I'm sorry, second?
The concern would be whether the tanks leak and what the precautions are, excuse me, to prevent leakage. And those would be functions of the construction materials and design specs. And again, I wanna make it clear, I'm not saying this isn't, probably you've just never seen one of these before and we've never had one proposed.
I just don't wanna go on the record voting for something that I don't have a clue how it's gonna work. And, nothing against y'all, love the presentation, but, yeah.
Well, maybe once we actually get, get word from the Board of Health. I mean, then maybe we can bring this back and, and then, once we have that approval that we can do it.
Now, let me make sure that I understand. When you bring this process, when you're running this through, uh, Board of Health, Kelly specifically, comes and checks these doc, this document to say that the Board of Health says this is okay?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so, Board of Health has looked at this, you know, they have environmental person who...
If you don't know about construction...
I don't know, but, uh, well, she's also the lady who does all septic tanks for us too.
Mr., Mr. Chair, if I may? Um, so, what I would recommend in this situation, having been through one approval of one that does work, um, and it is pro, in proximity to Lake Lanier, incidentally. Um, it's south of Lake Lanier, but it is in their watershed management area. If you'll provide some specs on this, and also you have your grading plan already done, is that correct? So, you guys have already done the soil sampling and everything out there? Okay, so if we can possibly submit that to Public Health and get some feedback on that, on preliminary feedback, could we possibly table?
Can I, can I speak to that real quick?
Sure.
I, I'm, I'm just gonna be honest with y'all. Um, I would just really, really appreciate not tabling this and here's why. We, we were supposed to be here last month, but there was some sort of issue with something and it wasn't done right. We're out of time on our contract, on our land. We've had it in our contract for a while and, and the process is just taking so long. So, we've got a lot of earnest money that's, that's hard. I'm just be, I'm just being completely honest, so...
We understand.
Um, I, I would, if, if there's any way possible, y'all could just give us approval with, with the condition that we can't start anything until these specs are approved, whatever, I would greatly appreciate that 'cause we've gotta get this lot closed. So, if there's any way y'all could do that.
I'll be happy to answer any technical questions that you may have to help you better understand what the system is and how common it, commonly is used with car washes.
I, I'm, I'm fine approving it with that condition of them having to come back and show a plan at a later date or get, you know, staff approval that this is, you know, liaise, show that they've liaised with the Department or whatever.
Board of Health.
Based on that.
Board of Health, yes.
You know what I'm saying, like?
There are technical engineers for this to be able to really do it. Kelly is, not Miss Kelly.
My, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Gwynne, you look confused.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just being very honest with you. I've been sitting here long enough to know that if you vote for stuff and it doesn't work...
Yep.
They're looking at you, the, the, the people in this audience and in the county are looking at us for not investigating it enough
Absolutely.
Before it became a problem.
We're a hundred percent okay with not starting anything, but like, so, basically, if, if we don't get approval tonight, like our contract is up tomorrow and we have a lot of money, earnest money, that goes hard, he can take it and run. So, that, that's why I'm asking for that. But, we are totally fine with not getting started until we get all that, you know, approved. So, we, we do things the right way, we're, we're totally fine with that.
So, Mr...
I mean, I'm, I go with the majority, but I'm just, I had to...
Okay, Kelly, can you...
So, Mr., Mr. Chair, if I may? Um, in the process of doing this, the, the application before you is not an application to build. The application before you is for a permit to submit plans to build. There's actually two more hoops that they have to jump through in order to get this done. Um, so that first permit is gonna be the land disturbance permit, the LDP, where they come in, they bring all of their engineer grading permits, all of, all of the septic will be on that, where their drain lines will be, and also hopefully the specs for this tank will be in that as well. Um, so that we can get that streamline process going. Because anytime that they have to dig a hole that big, they do need an LDP to put that tank in the ground. So, that will be part of their review process to get their land disturbance permit. That's before they build a building, that's before one piece of equipment is installed, that's before one pipe is laid. Once all of that is approved, then they will go through the building permit process. If they do not pass muster with the LDP process, we never move forward beyond that. Part of that review is not only an engineering review, but also Public Health does have to sign off on it.
Okay. You're confident that we'll be able to know that this is gonna work before we get ready to build?
I'm, I am...
Wham, right there.
I, I...
I'll be...
I am.
I will be putting my stamp on the plan, certifying that it will function, and I do not stamp things that don't work.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, could I ask one more question? Your contract, is that contingent on rezoning or the special exception approval, whatever the application is?
Is your contract...
It's not, it's not dependent upon approval of the land disturbance permit, it's not...
That's correct, just on the use, yeah. We, we, we just need to get the, the approval that we can, we can do it, so.
Yes, sir. And so, with the stamp of an engineer to back me, yes, I'm confident that if it does, if, if there's something submitted that does not work, it will be caught in the review process.
All right, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, motion to approve was staff's.
Yes, sir.
And do I have a second?
I'll say again.
All right, motion and a second, any more discussion? This is the first time we're doing this, so this, we're gonna pay special attention to this, uh, this idea, all right.
So, this, the staff recommendation is that this would only go with this owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Non-transferable.
Okay, now I'm ready.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion passes.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Don't let me down, gentlemen.
Good luck, y'all.
Yeah, buddy. All right.
We're not finished yet, what about number four?
Do we gotta vote on that one?
We have the concept plan.
Don't leave, guys, hold it.
Pardon me?
We gotta vote on four separately?
It says Big Peach Concept Plan, that's, it says it's number four.
We did, uh, we did...
I think that is, Kelly, isn't that, uh...
That's the concept plan that, that they, that we just saw.
They just saw it, it was just how the software is currently working. We're moving to a new software here very quickly.
So, that doesn't get a separate vote?
It does not get a separate vote.
So, the motion was for this special exception to build and operate a car wash. It wasn't to approve the concept plan, that was not said. So, we need to undo that vote and put the right words in.
As, as the agenda is currently written, you can approve the concept plan separately.
Yeah, we only, we only...
We only did number three.
Okay, so I thought I heard somebody say we don't need to do four.
No.
Yeah, I, I did.
If it makes you feel better and more confident to approve the concept plan separately, I would urge you to do it.
Yes.
I would, I would state to the board, I would state to the board that if we can pull the concept plan back up, the development plan, Ms. Kathy, um, I would state to the board that this ensures that the applicant will not be seeking an entryway onto the highway. It will be entry from Zebulon Road.
That's correct.
So, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the concept plan for Big Peach Car Wash.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries. All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need another air freshener.
All right. Item number five. Application twenty-two zero-five Sierra. John Henderson, owner, one-two-three Sandy Lane, approximately three point zero-three acres, located on Land Lot forty-five of the First Land District. Requesting a special exception to place a new twenty-twenty-two manufactured home on the subject property. Ms. Littlefield.
Okay, this was originally submitted as a medical hardship. However, given the amount of time that has lapsed and situations that were well beyond my control, um, this is actually a standard special exception, is what this is. And it is a request to put a Class A manufactured home on a three-acre tract of AR-one zone property. The purpose that the family is wanting to put the mobile home on the separate parcel that sits adjacent to a relative is to maintain care for that relative so that they can, they can stay home and, rather than having to go to a facility or anything of that nature. That's the purpose, that's what we're dealing with. So, it is not a true medical hardship in that the land has been parceled that this will sit on. However, the applicant is here. We have wor, staff has worked diligently with this case. Um, the conditions are very similar to Grizzly Lane. We're proposing that it be a Class A manufactured home, the roof pitch is four-on-twelve. We're looking at the exterior being the hardy board, the cement fiber board, don't like using brand names. The cement fiber board, stone, stucco or brick, the front porch is in, underpinned, and all exterior materials be that to maintain, again, my favorite phrase, the continuity of design in the area. Um, the applicant, as I stated, is here and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, do we have anybody to speak for this? Wes Cohn.
I think that's the one.
Ah, yes, it is, please forgive me. Mr. Henderson?
Yes, sir.
Come forward, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir, my name is John Henderson, one-two-three Sandy Lane is the property we own. As you know, with today's economy, trying to build a stick-built home, I can't build one. It's not affordable. My, the nineteen-hundred-square-foot house that we wanted to build was gonna be over four-hundred thousand dollars. That ain't happening, not a chance. But, uh, we located a home out of Columbus, Georgia, that we liked, twenty-one-hundred square feet. Probably pricing now is probably two-hundred-and-fifteen grand, uh, which is affordable between me and my wife. My side door will look at my parents' back door, so we're right across the pasture from their house. They're getting up in age... They're getting up in age, um, and we wanna be close to mom and dad to take care of them if there's a problem. Currently, we're about twenty minutes away, but shoot across that pasture, we'll be there in a minute, two minutes if there's an issue. And take care of the animals, the property for mom and dad, um, just to be back home on the farm. That's what we're trying to do, and Ms. Kelly has helped so much. So, it's, it's been a rough ride through all the ups and downs of trying to get this approved, so.
Sorry about all that, but glad to get you where we want you to be, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Carrie Henderson?
Ms. Henderson, please state your name and address.
Uh, Carrie Henderson, the property is one, two, three Sandy Lane, and again, thank you, Ms. Kelly, for all of your help.
Is that your address, ma'am?
No, our physical address is one fifty-six Hunterian Place, Noonan, Georgia, three oh two six five. So we are currently, like my husband said, twenty minutes on a good day away from our elderly parents. One of our parents has been diagnosed with essential tremors. Our other one is stage four lymphatic cancer. We're right across the pasture. You all know, if anything happens, to call an ambulance, that's gonna take at least eight to ten minutes to get there. I'm BLS certified, I'm ALS certified, I can get across that pasture in less than a minute if I need to. So we're needing to get close to them in order to take care of them as they grow older, and just wanna be there to enjoy their company for the time that we have left with them.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions?
Not for them, uh, questions about, about the, the process. Based on our, okay, clearly, there is, there is no evidence of a hardship.
Thank you, ma'am, you can go ahead and sit down.
I understand that there is a situation, but there, we don't have any documentation that shows the hardship. And if it were a hardship, then that would be the requirement, that it would be a temporary home placed on the same property that the, um, the family member that you're assisting, um, is living at. So, the other thing is that we have a standard for whether or not we'll allow a mobile, not a mobile home, um.
Manufactured.
Manufactured home in any, in any zone, which is based on the trend of whether or not there's stick-built, built homes and whether or not there's a trend for, um, manufactured homes. And this does not meet that requirement based on the documentation that was presented to us. With seventy-three percent of the parcels being occupied, but more than fifty percent of them being stick-built homes, with the trend actually in favor of the stick-built home.
That's true.
Uh, you know, I'm just not really sure why the recommendation came from staff that way, because it clearly doesn't meet the criteria.
That's true.
And, and on that note, is why I feel that, I mean, I hate to do it, I'm all for raising the bar, but as long as we keep telling people they can do it, and they're spending the money to get the septic tanks digged in and getting all, spending all the money getting the permits and stuff to the county, I can't, in good faith, not support it. I mean, just, just because, I mean, it's, um, it's kinda disheartening. I mean, if they go to her in the beginning and she says, no, we can't do this, I'm all for it, I support it a hundred percent. But they've been through months and months, like Mr. Felix, months and months and months of waiting. It's cost hundreds and thousands and, I mean, just crap load of money they've spent on this stuff. And I just, it's just not right. So we gotta tell them, we gotta come up with a plan. So it starts. Saying, we, you gotta stop it, I mean, you gotta stop. Start from the beginning. Start from the beginning. Don't build people's hopes and dreams up and then shut them down here. They done been through her, they got all the permits, they've been through the other boards, the community development board, and everybody's approved it, and I just, we gotta fix this, if we wanna raise the bar, we gotta fix it.
Well, if we're, we're not giving people consistent information, that's a problem.
That's a problem.
But the information that's being given should be the information that we are actually making decisions about. And there have been at least two that I know for sure that have come to us with basically the exact same situation, and we summarily did not approve it for many of these same reasons. I mean, I, I totally get it, I would wanna be close to my mom and dad too, but there, you know, I don't know if someone told this family that they needed to separate that tract, which took it out of the original tract. I don't know if anybody told them that they needed to have a, a doctor's note that clearly says you need somebody there to do X, Y, Z for you.
Mr. Chairman, may I please speak?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, in speaking with Ms. Morales this afternoon, I do believe there was a document submitted confirming a medical hardship. However, the application has since been amended, that it's not based on a medical hardship. It's, it is a straight-out special exception for a manufactured home on a separate parcel.
But we don't have any evidence of a men, of, of their, I mean, even if there were evidence of that, that there were a medical hardship, where we were able to see the documentation, you, we still would have to make an exception to the fact that it is a different tract, which is, like I said, you opened the Pandora's box up, you haven't done it for everybody else, what's to stop the next person from coming in and us saying, well, that's not really our rule, it's not raising the bar, but you did it for somebody else. All I ask is that we be consistent.
Oh, good point.
So, so there's, there's two groups that we have to be fair to. There's the citizens that live around the site and the people that are applying. So, the people that are applying have worked really hard, um, they've gone through multiple folks sitting in these chairs over here to get where they're at. I think, on one hand, it would be unfair to them to, to not approve this. They've started the work, they've done a lot, that it's, you know, if it's upfront and you can't, don't even, like the other ones, then, then it's not unfair. That said, um, if that means that the neighborhood starts going in that direction and it signals that other people can start doing the same thing, then it's unfair to the people who live in the neighborhood. What, what I would propose is that we approve it with a special condition, maybe that's not the right word here, um, that this parcel not be included in any future measurements of manufactured homes as far as the density in the area. Because, on one hand, it's sort of our fault that we sort of signaled to them a green light, and we shouldn't have.
Who did it, who signaled to them a green light? I don't, I don't know, nobody's claiming that. I mean, you know, call it what it is, is there a paper? I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm, I hear you saying we signal to people. I haven't seen any evidence that someone told them, go out, take this piece of land off, you can have blah, 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 blah without a hardship. I mean, if somebody could show me that.
How long has this parcel been separated from the original parcel? Does it say?
That is in the tax assessor's records.
It, it, the separation predates the application.
Okay. All right, now.
It was, it was a year. June, July.
So, but the application didn't happen June of last year. All, all I'm saying is that.
Nope, your, your, your point is all valid, we're all looking at each other about this. This is, this issue to me is, Kelly, you've got to make sure that, in the beginning, we can't get people moving in such a long direction, that when it gets to us, all of a sudden, we say, whoa, 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 this doesn't meet the procedures and the process that we wanna go. We understand this predates you and that you're in the midst of trying to clean it all up, but it can't get like that. That's, that's puts us in that awkward situation where we say, we're trying to raise the bar, we're trying to be not precedent-setting on changing, and we want the rules to be the rules, and we wanna follow the rules, and then all of a sudden, it comes up like this.
I would like it noted that the applicants have made concessions in ensuring that this manufactured home does have a stick-built residential appearance. They've acquiesced to the materials, they've also, um, made, made strides in the underpinning and also any accessory uses around the, around the manufactured home.
I am totally disappointed at the fact that you have gone out of your way to make sure that they meet all the requirements that might make them okay, when they are clearly, according to our ordinance, not okay. That is not, I don't feel like that is your job. Your job is to follow the ordinance, and then it's for us to decide whether or not there should be an exception. No disrespect, but you're telling us that they have done X, Y, Z, still doesn't fix it. It doesn't make it right, because we're not treating everybody else the same way. It's not, that's why we said have a medical letter. Even if they had a medical letter tonight, there is not, it doesn't meet the criteria in terms of acreage in the property. So as a, as a planning and development, I mean, in terms of the lot, ha, them having to be on the same lot. So I'm, I'm just.
Yep, we, we understand. All right, uh, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with a special condition that this, uh, exception being granted doesn't, doesn't count towards future exceptions in the area.
Please say. The density calculation manufactured homes in the area? Yes, sir.
Let's say it doesn't set precedent for the calculation.
Thank you.
Of density or.
Much better, thank you.
How can he is make an emotion to say it doesn't make precedent, not make it precedent? I hear what you're saying, but you're saying that, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't make precedent. When someone comes back in to sue us, they're gonna say you created a precedent by allowing somebody else to do something you didn't allow everybody else to do. Where's a lawyer in here?
So how can we make that the way?
What, what, what y'all, how y'all?
Okay, all right, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say again.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on this? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Three, all those opposed, two, motion carries. All right. Now, Kelly and Newton, you got the stuff where.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with this conditions and all that stuff. Application number six and number seven, we're gonna take these together, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, application number six, application twenty-two dash zero four Zulu, LNC Partnership LLP, owner Taylor English Duma, LLP agent, parcel two thousand, uh, ten, zero, one, zero, zero, eight, approximately fifty-four point nine acres, located on Land Lot eighty of the second land district, requesting a modification of zoning condition imposed on application zero four two-two Z.
Is there, is there any kind of?
I'm going to the.
An address on this? I just, I wanna.
No, sir, there's not, it's a zero, it's a zero address at this time.
Is there a close address, so I can pull it up on the map somehow?
Emerald Forest.
All right, I'm reading the second one too, which is part of this. Application twenty-two dash zero six Sierra, LLC Partnership LLP, owner Taylor English Duma, LLP agent, parcel twen, two hundred and ten, zero, one, zero, zero, eight, approximately fifty-four point nine acres lock, located in Land Lot eighty of the second land district, requesting a special exception to allow for a country club themed subdivision with thirty-nine buildable lots. All right, Ms. Littlefield.
All right, so the first application, um, rezoning.
How do I, how do I pull this up on a map?
So this is.
You need a physical address.
This is Jackson Road, just west of one fifty-five. It's across the street from the new, uh, or the, the construction that's going on for a new, uh, convenience store. So it's at the apex of the curve, just before you get to the four-way stop on Jackson Road.
At double cabins?
Yes.
Yeah, west of, uh, the intersection.
Is this a subdivision that's coming through the back of the other that?
If, if you drive down one fifty-five coming from Griffin, you'll see it on the left-hand side, and it's in a kind of a.
Ms. Kathy, can we pull up the aerial map, please?
On the right-hand side, yes.
It, it has no address, because it's undeveloped.
I'm sorry.
So if you'll look at the screen. If you'll direct your attention to your screen, the aerial map is pulled up of the parcel.
Okay.
All right. Um, all right, so the first application, uh, the reason that we pulled these together is because one doesn't work without the other. If you, if you don't approve both at the same time, neither one gets moving. They're both showstoppers. So, um, the first application is the modification of the zoning conditions imposed in application zero four dash two-two Z, um, on the property. It's my understanding that they had requested to modify the zoning condition. In two thousand and four, the subject property was to be developed as an addition, like a next phase of Emerald Forest. But the subject property, um, with the additional acreage, uh, it was, there was, there was a loss of some kind when Highway one fifty-five was relocated. So, everybody?
Yeah, they, they shifted one fifty-five to the right, to the east, yeah.
And it is a beautiful shift, it's fabulous. So, um, but moving forward, they did ask, um, because of that hardship, they did ask for a change in their zoning conditions, and those are as follows. Primarily in their setbacks and also with the, um, pardon me, I'm out of sorts. With the country club subdivision, and then if you note the conditions, um, if you'll pull up the staff recommendations, Ms. Kathy? On page three and four. But this is, um, these, these conditions are very similar to the previous country club subdivision that was under litigation, but they, the design standards are very similar. They're still being held to that same concept design that was submitted originally in the rezoning application. And we're going to be looking towards final approval of the plat. All of the lots will have forty-five feet or more, will have sod in the front yard. Front porches and decks shall be finished in character with the homes. Vinyl siding is prohibited, and then the development does include a, um, a walk, it's a recommendation of staff that include a walking trail. And then final approval, of course, is, um, conditional upon BOC approval of this special exception application, which is the second part of this.
So there's a, there's a condition set by staff, there's gonna be a walking trail.
Right.
Can you pull up the map and show me where the walking trail's gonna be?
Not at this time, I can't, because of the, the design's not been finalized, that's actually approved in the plat process.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Okay, I, well, you don't have a, a plan. My concern is that I've had a call from the homeowners association at Emerald Forest that says that whoever's developing that piece of property is bringing equipment through their homeowners association property. I didn't see anything on here that showed where there would be an entry or an exit without going through there. Since this is no longer Phase Two of Emerald Forest, then there should be their own access.
Yes, ma'am.
To their subdivision of where, where.
If, that is actually a perfect segue into the second half of this application, since we're reviewing them together. Ms. Kathy, if you will, I believe the concept plan is in the second application.
The application?
The preliminary plat at the bottom.
Some kind of intersection as opposed to like.
So if we can zoom out slightly? So the walking trail, as I read the current plat that's been submitted, is around the lake, and it's accessible via a sidewalk system internal.
James, did you hear that about where the walking trail is?
No.
Around the lake.
We're hanging it all.
Uh, but you don't on the other side of the lake?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's the front side of it.
Okay.
Okay, and the, um.
It just goes back and forth on the one side of the lake?
And so there is access off of one fifty-five, as currently shown. The condition, staff does recommend, again, conditional approval. Again, with the same style of, of conditions that were previously recommended, with the condition that there is a, a walking trail, um, running from the observation platform shown on the concept plan at the northeast corner of Lot twenty-nine.
Wait, say that again?
Number eleven on the second report. The development should include a walking trail running from the observation. The development shall include a walking trail running from the observation platform shown on the concept plan at the northeast corner of lot twenty-nine.
It's kinda hard to say that because it's so little.
If we can pull the concept plan back up, Ms. Kathy?
We're working it, Kathy.
Forty yet, I can't see that now.
All right, if you'll zoom in. Scroll down, yes. Lot twenty-nine is right before you get to that curve at Paradise Drive.
Yeah, okay.
So there'll be a, a publicly accessible observation deck?
On the rear of that property in the, in the common space.
So is that lot twenty-nine is somebody's house?
Lot twenty-nine is, but if you look to the rear towards the lake, that's common space of the development.
Right, but I'm saying that's behind someone's, will be behind someone's home.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Is there gonna be a fence, a berm that separates your property from everybody walking through? I mean, it's a common space, but I mean.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, if you would, please state your name and your address.
Chairman, Commissioners, Stephen Jones, thank you for the opportunity as always to appear before you with the law firm of Taylor English Duma. Our address is sixteen hundred Parkwood Circle, Suite two hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three nine. Here today on behalf of the applicant, Tri-Lake Forest and LNC Partnership, those are two different entities. They own both the properties at issue. Let me get my clicker.
He doesn't work, he's like.
Next slide, Ms. Gibson. You'll see the two tracks outlined, Tri-Lakes owns the lake, LNC owns the larger tract. Initially, this tract included the eyebrow across the street on one fifty-five. When one fifty-five was realigned, the track was split. We have, the applicant has since sold the eyebrow, it's currently under development. Next slide, Ms. Gibson. Just to zoom in, you can see the lake. This was originally approved as a special exception country club subdivision in two thousand and four. That included a rezoning to R two as well as a special exception. When that was done, Mr. Taylor's, the way he drafted it, this, they were mirror image conditions imposed upon both applications. That's why you have both a rezoning before you and a special exception before you because those mirror image conditions were imposed on both applications. So to modify those conditions and change the subdivision, we have to have both applications. The major modifications, next slide, Ms. Gibson. This is the original plan. As you'll see, uh, in oh four, this was anticipated to be the second phase for Emerald Forest. It would have had an entrance coming through Emerald Forest. We have since, and part of this application is to eliminate that entrance. We want it to be a standalone subdivision for a variety of reasons. The second part of this application is to add more amenity areas, uh, and just more passive recreation. And thirdly, there was a condition imposed, next slide, Ms. Gibson. These are the conditions of approval. There was a condition imposed in oh four that arguably, it's ambiguous. It could have tied this to a, a housing concept, which is, um, not in production anymore. And so that's one of the major reasons to mod, that we've asked to modify it. And we thought we'd go ahead and update the plan and add some more, uh, desirable features while we're under the hood. Next, uh.
Can we go back to that one?
Yes, certainly.
Sorry to interrupt your flow. But, so that, it was approved and you, they built the first half with, with these conditions.
Emerald Forest, I believe, was a, a separate rezoning with different conditions. This was a later. Newton shaking his head. Yeah, so Emerald Forest was a, I, I believe there was some common ownership there and common developers, but, uh, there was some separation in the entity. So this was a, a tack along, follow along. So these conditions are unique to Lake Forest, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm just looking at D and E. Are we gonna have a commercial playground and a clubhouse?
Uh, we are gonna have a commercial playground. Clubhouses are not in favor because of the maintenance obligation. So we traded that out for a pavilion with a fireplace, commercial picnic tables. Yeah, playground, um, all that. Next slide, Ms. Gibson. So this is the housing plan that was incorporated by reference in the original zoning conditions. This thing's not in production anymore, it hasn't been built in over twenty years. So due to that ambiguity in the zoning condition, we just thought it was prudent to come forward, especially if we have an off taker that's a builder tying this to, there's just, again, the ambiguity. Arguably, the original approval was tied to a house plan that the ultimate user may not be building. So, next slide, Ms. Gibson. Here's the plan we have now. Uh, Ms. Littlefield just put this up, it, this is, uh, uh, it has a lot of different features. What, uh, I wanna point out to you is that this is for, uh, a total of thirty-seven lots. The lots are numbered because there's, uh, four different amenity areas throughout the site. And so we have those numbered on the preliminary plat, which was, uh, voted and approved by the planning commission late last month just for ease of conveyance later. So next slide. You'll see here, this on the top left, that's the amenity area. Go back a slide, Ms. Gibson. That's the amenity area at the top right where you see that hash line coming in. So next slide, Ms. Gibson. You'll see the amenity area has the, where the walking trail starts. You have the central mailbox unit, parking for the central mailbox unit, as well as parking for the amenity area. You have the pavilion, you have a playground, you ha- and you have a fire pit. And that's where the walking trail would start. You see on the image to the right, the walking trail would then curve down to a wildlife observation platform that overlooks the lake. It then continues to curve around, next slide, Ms. Gibson. Coming down to another wildlife preserve, and this is at the southern port, portion. We then platted an easement running between lots twenty-six and twenty-five to get back into, uh, the neighborhood. So there was, the board had some questions about way that walking trail ran. You would, you would walk through the internal sidewalk up to the amenity area, walk around the lake, and then come up through the easement in the bottom, uh, southeastern cul-de-sac.
So there, there are internal sidewalks?
There are, that's correct. One of your, your ordinance requires as parts of design, four-foot sidewalks, and, and, and that's what we're gonna go with, so four-foot sidewalks on both sides.
Can you go back to the last slide? At the, the top left there, uh, I, I count five parking spaces for that amenity area. Is that, is that the plan, or is that just an artist rendition of what we're gonna have as far?
Those parking spots are for the CMU. The neighborhood's so tight, we really envisioned people walking there instead of driving there. And especially because we've got more amenity areas scattered throughout. Ms. Gibson, you got two slides forward.
Does the, does the, um, sidewalks walk all the way to that parking lot and then like out, or?
Yeah, the way we read the ordinance is that the, all the, those sidewalks have to be internal throughout the subdivision. It's not selected streets. Uh, so again, going back to the lot numbering thing, you'll see, and these are all kind of on the western side. You can see the one fifty-five right of way. We have an open space community garden. We envision that to be kind of raised garden beds, uh, fenced in, then marching further south.
Who's gonna do that?
Yeah, is that gonna be built?
Like, is the developer going to put raised bins in, raised beds in, and fence it in? That, that's, that's the plan, correct. And then to be maintained by the HOA. Then we've also got a dog park is lot four with fencing around it. And then in the south, we've just got a open passive recreation area, like kids playing frisbee and whatnot.
Well, right now, it's, it's covered in trees. Are they gonna bulldoze the trees to make a frisbee area, or?
It, there's gonna be clearing of those lots to make various recreation areas, that's correct. Especially with the community garden and dog park, and then the open passive area. So, yeah. Next slide, please, Ms. Gibson. These are staff recommended conditions, we consent to all of them, but I just wanted to go through them with you so you can kind of understand, and, and most of these are self-imposed. We've worked with staff to refine these from the ones we originally proposed. There's one I wanna talk about is to the, how the walking trail will be platted and approved. But these are designed to help us ensure that what we've designed on paper carries through to fruition. So number one is just that it'll follow the country club theme under your special exception, R two subdivision, that's, uh, the one acre lots. Two is that the development shall be in substantial compliance, uh, with all of the conditions, as well as this concept plan that we just went through. Again, that's making sure that it's carried to fruition. Three, streetscape shall be per the county ordinance. Four, po- prior to the final plat, uh, declaration of covenants, uh, with a homeowners association, and that will also govern use and appearance of lots. Five is that that lake in the common areas, because there are a lot of common re- activity areas, will be owned and maintained in perpetuity by an HOA. Uh, six, the amenity area thirty-eight on the concept plan, that's that northern one with where the CMU was, shall include the mail kiosk, a raised bed community garden. We'd ask that you move that one to another lot, but if you want the community garden there, we're fine with it, but we've just proposed it on the separate lot.
It's a lot going on in that area.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, so we're gonna move it to the standalone community garden area. So thirty-eight would include the mail kiosk, nick the community garden, move it to the other lot. Pavilion with picnic table, fire pit, commercial gate, playground, and then the pavilion shall be deemed the clubhouse. Next slide, Ms. Gibson. All lots with fifty-foot setbacks shall be sodded. That's co- that's codifying to this plan, one of the ordinance requirements, selecting the design. Eight, front porches or decks shall be finished in a character with the homes. Nine, no vinyl siding. Uh, all dwellings constructed of at least two of the following materials on all facades, cement, fiber board, stone, stucco, brick, or real wood. Ten, all porches underpinned. Eleven, this is the one that, uh, I mentioned that we want, would, asking for a modification from, from the ones, from the conditions that come to you with a recommendation of approval, and that is to make it consistent with the concept plan. So in a, I think in the original version, the lots might have been numbered differently. So this is just to make sure that that walking trail doesn't go into lot twenty-nine, like you were talking about Commissioner Flowers-Taylor. It goes down into, I think, thirty-four and thirty-three, those in the southern cul-de-sac. So we're asking that the walking trail be as shown by Scanlon Engineering's preliminary plat that was approved by the planning commission on May thirty-first. And then finally, twelve, minimum house square footage, eighteen hundred for one story, twenty-two for two stories.
Got a question. The, um, I, I was just out there yesterday. So right next to the subdivision that used to be the phase one, all of those trees are gone. What kind of berm are you gonna have, since this is a separate subdivision? That will, I mean, clearly already they've cut the trees down. People are looking in their backyard at a big mu- muddy mess. What, what kind of accommodations are gonna be made for that? And then the second thing is, the road that is suggested is like right in a curve. And it's on the low end of the wet side of that entire piece of property.
Correct, on, on both counts, Commissioners. So I'll address those in reverse order. The road, it's subject to G dot approval. So we've done an ice study, got a preliminary approval for it. Uh, if, it's gonna go to them for site distances. So if they approve it, great, if not, we're sunk.
Okay.
And then accommodations for, uh, Emerald Forest, we've had some conversations with the neighbors back there. And talked to them about how the, uh, LDP will try to preserve a, uh, undisturbed buffer right there. So, because the, it has, it has been cleared, but it has not all been cleared. So there's still some natural vegetation back there. And the goal is to preserve that. It's not to clear cut and mass grade the whole thing. These will be individually graded and, and, and padded lots, if that makes sense.
It, it, it makes sense what you're saying, but the fact on the ground is that it's already been clear cut for the first, the very front of the lo- of that subdivision and kind of going around to the north, yes, that's northeast. I, I didn't see any trees that were left. So, uh, you know, I, if we're gonna protect people who have already built.
We need a screen.
In any other situation, we would try to provide some sort of vegetated berm that would separate those two subdivisions. And I don't see that that's, that you guys are offering that here.
Yeah, that's not on this plan. I don't think we'd be entirely opposed to it. I don't, yep, I got a yes. Uh, it, it don't like, uh, it, I would be shy away from a berm. If that's what you want, uh, we can do it.
No, I'm not asking for a berm.
I mean, if that will, what worked for you, I mean, obviously you cannot plant trees that will, before twenty years, that will actually cover that forest of, that was already there, that separates, that subdivision between, between the one that you're developing and the one that's already there. I, I would like to see something, um.
We could do a planet, we could do a planet buffer of, uh, you know, some sort of evergreen. We could do, uh, some style of fencing, uh, if you.
What are you saying, Kelly?
Standard, we do, we do not, that I'm aware of, we do not have a standard in our ordinance regarding this type of development because it's like for like. In most jurisdictions that I have worked in, in metro Atlanta, there is a ten to fifteen foot landscape buffer that is, that is requested to be installed. Typically, it's a ver- it's again, my favorite words, it's a variegated buffer of evergreen and deciduous of native species. Um, that is a standard practice across the metro. It's also very prevalent throughout the rest of Georgia, and I think it's a reasonable expla- expectation. Um, by allowing them to do deciduous and evergreen, it creates a soil topology that allows for a rapid growth product, as well as having the evergreens, we also get a screening that, that comes into effect.
She's answered that question before. Okay.
Once or twice, yes.
Okay, make sure that's.
Yeah, can we add that as a condition, some kind of?
Okay.
Yeah, we're fine with that, yeah. The applicant.
I wanna, I wanna, just wanna bring back up where your current, your exit is. So if you wanna go to that, where it goes on to one fifty-five. I, I, I can't imagine G dot giving you guys approval. That's a, that's a curve and it's, it's turning right there into a three lane. And then you have Macintosh coming.
Right there.
So. My, my suggestion is to, just to take a hard left there and bring that road into where Macintosh is to make that almost an intersection, if that makes sense. Again.
And we're happy to look at it. What I would suggest, if, and if the board's okay with it, is you can just place a condition that the entrance shall be at the location approved by G dot, because.
Well, G dot does weird stuff. They're making a turnaround on forty-one that's totally unnecessary, so, you know.
But on any given day, that traffic from that four-way stop gets backed up. Well past that to the Macintosh road, so. I mean, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure G dot's aware of that. That's one of those hot intersections that they're, you know, we're doing the nineteenth, the, the McDonald Road thing, but. I would trust whatever they say. I don't think that, I think they would be concerned about site distance speed, all those things. And if they tell you where to put it, then.
I'm okay with that.
That would be where G dot.
Be, be ready to move that around.
We have, we have already been in, started extensive discussions with them.
G dot's super fun.
Yes, very much.
All right, anything else from you, sir?
No, Chairman.
Okay.
And I'll preserve time for rebuttal if necessary, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, may I have a point of clarification on the buffer before we go into motion?
Are there anyone else to speak?
Oh.
There is no one else, um, listed to speak, no, sir.
Okay.
Fifteen or ten foot, what is your pleasure?
Fifteen.
Fifteen it is.
Did you see my lips move? Fifteen.
Fifteen it is, sir.
Thank you. All right. Any, any more discussion? All right, do I have a motion to approve? I'm sorry, what?
You have to follow them separately.
Yeah, that's correct. Item number six.
I make a motion that we approve item number six with the conditions set forward by staff with, hold on, which one? And, and the additional, um, condition of the screen. And the additional condition of G dot approval of the entrance exit. If that's not already one of them, I think it might have already been one.
Yeah. In the lot, is it easement? Undisturbed up, as opposed to separately platted? Or separately platted?
That's a great question.
What does that mean in English?
So do, do we want to reduce these lot sizes to make that? Or do we wanna put an easement in there to make it part of that lot size?
That's, that's you. I mean, that's your money.
I think, I think easement, uh, sort of tricks the landowner. I think if it was an easement, they would not, they would think I owned this much, and they really don't, because they've gotta keep.
So the only problem with that is that we've already been through preliminary plat approval. And so, and it also plays with the acreage calculations for open space. So we'd have to shift lots around and eat into other open space elsewhere. So prefer an easement, but I do understand your concern.
Can I make a recommendation to the board in this condition? If we leave it as a condition, it has to be documented on each individual lot plat. And it has to be notated that it is an undisturbed buffer.
Okay.
And. Is there? is there is there a way to also make that a condition with their HOA as well, those cats can't? You know what I'm saying? I don't know.
As an understored buffer, that's
Like the easement might...
That's the language that covers it.
Yeah, but I mean, they, again, bankruptcies can get rid of conditions, whereas nothing can get rid of an HOA. Nothing, short of a nuclear bomb, you can't get away from an HOA, so...
Well, the bankruptcy, Commissioner, might actually get rid of the HOA before it got rid of the zoning condition.
Conditions follow the plan.
We, we, we do bankruptcies in my firm, and you can't bankrupt out of HOA. If you owe one dollar to them, they're gonna get it.
Out of their dues. I'm with you.
Okay, hold it. Let's get back on, yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner, how about both? Make it a condition, and we'll put it in the covenants as well. Then you got two swords.
Whoop, I agree with that. Okay, we agree with that? Yeah, that's okay. All right.
Then I, I am gonna modify my motion
To include.
To so include.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. All right, I have a motion and a second.
I got it.
Okay, any more discussion?
We're all professionals up here.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Motion to approve with all the previous conditions in six. Uh-oh.
I got one more point in there.
All right, please.
That condition eleven, we're going with as shown, the walking trails as shown on the preliminary plat, not, so it doesn't go through twenty-nine, right?
Yes, like substantial compliance to, as that map shows, right?
So, yeah, the conditions as we had on the power point, as opposed to conditions in your package.
On the package, yeah. Come down around to the cul-de-sac.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, as opposed to going to lot twenty-nine, we had it just to...
Doesn't that show that?
It does.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
As opposed to the way the conditions would read would be here.
Oh, yeah, 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 the longer one. Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah.
Commissioner.
So, yes. The fact that this subdivision is on a state highway, it's off of the state highway, I have a concern about our stance with people having sidewalks, especially if their, their property or their, their development is adjacent to the state road.
We need a second on that motion. That's, uh...
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, excuse me, go ahead. Yes, sidewalks. External sidewalks.
I mean, that's, that's, that's part of what we're, we say that we're, we're managing. It's true. Obviously, you're putting homes where there are already thirty or forty, and add another thirty-nine. People are there. And so, as part of our sidewalk plan, I thought that we said that that would be what we would require, and then we would be able to do the fill-in as needed. So, I didn't, nobody said anything about that.
All right, do you see sidewalks on the outside along one fifty-five?
No, Chairman. It's, it's a GDOT issue. And so, it's their right-of-way.
But, but we put them in front of the Zaxby's too. That's a GDOT right-of-way.
Okay, our, our, our desires is that there are side, almost demand, that there are sidewalks outside. And we'll, if GDOT says absolutely no, then we'll back, but...
In their right-of, okay.
We want sidewalks all along that issue.
Every part of that development that is next to the, to the state road.
Yeah. And, and again, unless GDOT says, no, you can't do that.
Yes. So we want them, and if GDOT tells you no, then come back to us. All right?
I mean, I know that that's significantly different on their money, but I guess somewhere on the front end, we should be letting people know that that's a requirement. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, Kelly, you're, you're understanding here.
It's in our plan, correct?
You understand the requirement. We want sidewalks. Okay, that's not, that's not...
We did, this has been on the books for a while. We've been working this for a while. So we're gonna need, we're gonna need a new motion and a new second.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, then I'll, I'll withdraw my motion. If you will withdraw the second.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, then I'll make a new motion. Here we go. Motion, motion to approve with staff conditions and, well, motion to approve with all the conditions that we set forward in six, right?
Yes.
In six, with the additional condition of sidewalks along one fifty-five as approved by GDOT.
And do we have to mention the walking trail in there too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, where the walking trail are actually...
And the, and the walking trail condition is the longer walking trail.
Wrong, right. Instead of the lot twenty-nine, it's...
As, as on the, as presented by the applicant.
Right.
It's different.
But in, in the sidewalks, but that's only if GDOT permits them in their right-of-way.
If GDOT says you can't build them, then you can't do it. Yeah. We're, we're requiring them, but GDOT's word's gonna trouble us, so...
We want them there. That's the issue.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
All right, so you have a motion by James and a second by Rita.
All right, any more discussion on this? Thank you, Gwen, for bringing up the sidewalk. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Thank you. All right, item number eight. Application twenty-two dash zero seven Sierra, Twin Valley LLC, owner five twenty-five Bethany Road, approximately tw- two thou, two hundred and two point five-five acres, located in Land Lot Ten in the first land district, requesting a special exception, converted existing barn to barn dominium. Ms. Kelly? I didn't know if...
So staff does recommend approval, and we recommend approval with all, compliance to all current zoning ordinances associated with this type of development.
Motion to approve.
Does anybody here to speak?
Yes, Mr. Adams.
I don't have to speak.
All right. You don't have to speak? Don't ask questions sometimes if you have to.
Barn dominium, it's...
All right, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Yes.
Yes, okay, so, did you show us the map? Because I'm over here looking at Q public, and it looks like that five twenty-five is two parcels.
Which one you want, Kelly?
Five twenty-five Bethany, isn't that what we said?
That's correct.
The aerial, Ms. Kathy. And so this is the larger of the two, I believe. Is that correct?
Okay, but I'm just, I'm just saying, how can two parcels be one parcel?
Be a non-contiguous parcel.
More than likely, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Adams, as this is your property, was the track that is between those, that, the, the Q-shaped track that was separated out of the parent track, is that correct?
We've been, the tax laws have been that way for a hundred years.
Okay.
It's five hundred acres and a whole track.
So since I have a note that I was born in nineteen eighty, I have no idea how it got this way.
So, so, yeah, I, I mean, you know, if, if this is what we pull up as actually the record, this is obviously two tracks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, you're saying, this is not technical, saying the bigger one.
Yeah, we've...
We need a physical...
Yeah, we found an error in, in the plating essentially. I mean, not plating, but like the, is there a way to...
Say it's on the big one, but I'm just saying, for the record,
Yeah, can we...
This is not right.
I mean, we, we, we don't need to fix this tonight, but can we fix this?
It, it needs to be identified more succinctly. Because when someone comes behind us in twenty years or thirty years, they're gonna be like, five twenty-five, which one? I mean, how did they do that?
This appears to be a problem in Q public rather than ownership. And bottom line is, you've got,
Fantastic.
You've got, in your mind and for a tax bill, a single track that happens to have two, two parts to it. I would recommend that you just designate that it is, as, as, that there would be a condition where you just designate it that it is that part of the tract bounded by Bethany Road and Rawls Road.
Okay.
Because we can't, we are, we are stuck with the...
Well, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but even on the map where you're showing us, not necessarily Q publicly, is weird.
It is.
Can we look into if that's
But I think that defines it
Because it's non-contiguous.
If you say the one, the parcel that
We don't have to do it tonight.
Is bounded by Rawls and Bethany Road.
You own the whole track up under the, that large track too, don't you? All the way to three sixty-two?
Okay.
I mean, he owns that whole big block.
The tax assessor's recall.
That's correct. Dr. Steve needs, Dr. Steve needs to raise it to the tax assessor. Mr. Adams, is that southern track there on Williamson Road and Rawls Road, is that in Kuva?
Yes.
All right, so the other two, were they also in Kuva?
They are.
All right, so they have split those three out into a Kuva position so that, apparently, at some point, someone wanted to do something different. All right, so I will...
We've not changed it since we've had ownership of it.
Completely understand. I will take a note to speak with the tax assessor to understand the requirements of those three parcel, or those three, those three splits on that one parcel.
Because it absolutely makes no sense. If it's all under conservation, it's all by the same owner, and two of the tracks have the same address, and the, the other track, okay, that says Williamson Road.
Yeah, that one track doesn't touch Bethany.
Mr. Adams, is there a cellular tower on any of these?
Uh, there, there is on the neighbor track.
All right, so at one point, someone was thinking about putting a cellular tower on one of these particular tracks, and they were excluding that from the parent track to allow for that option to pull it out of Kuva.
Right, but that makes it a separate track.
It does make it a separate track, and that's something that I will...
Different.
That is correct. Since not, since a tower was not placed on that track, then they may have just let it stay in Kuva, but it is something that I will take note of and speak with the tax assessors tomorrow.
All right.
We do not.
Yeah, we've got a motion.
Yes, sorry, James and Rita.
James and Rita, all right. Any more discussion on this?
Good to go.
All right, all those in...
Do we have to have a fight plan?
Condition to designate it, designate the property, is that portion of the property bounded by Bethany?
I amend in my motion, she's seconding mine.
Just checking, thank you.
All right. No more discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. All right. Item number nine. Application twenty-two point, uh, dash zero eight Sierra, Spalding Vineyard, one twenty LLC. Is there something, something wrong?
I was asking if nine and ten could be done together.
Yes, they can.
Yes.
They can be heard together.
Both nine and ten can be read together.
Nine and ten need to be consolidated for hearing.
All right, we're consolidating nine and ten. I'll read them both. Approximately a hundred and twenty point eight-eight acres located in Land Lot Thirty-eight in the third district, requesting a special exception to allow a conservation subdivision with forty-eight single-family housing lots. Item number ten. Application twenty-two dash zero eight Zulu, Spalding Vineyards, one twenty LLC, owner eleven forty-three Vineyard Road, approximately a hundred and twenty point eight-eight acres located in Land Lot Thirty-eight of the third district, requesting a rezoning from R two to AR one to R two zoning.
Can you bring the map up?
Okay.
Was that the third one? That was nine.
That was both of them.
It was nine and ten.
I read both of them. Nine and ten. All right, Ms. Littlefield.
All right, so they are requesting a rezoning to consolidate the zoning. From what I understand, this is, this is a parcel that has a split zoning on it. They're requesting to consolidate it to the, to R two. And we are also looking at the dimensional standards that would go along with R two.
Like, like the normal R two standards?
Yes, sir. Um, the conditions that are recommended by staff are specific to the design criteria, the sidewalks. We're requesting four-foot sidewalks most assuredly. We're also looking at public parking spaces at the amenity, the garages and their dimensions. Also, Planning Commission made, made several recommendations as well. They wanted to see customary home materials that are of a higher grade, no vinyl. And they also recommend, recommended that the HOA to maintain all of the common spaces. Staff does recommend approval and on both applications with these conditions.
Okay, good with that. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, do I have a second?
Do we have anyone to speak? Yeah, we, we do have someone to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And also, let me, let me ask one question, Kelly. I'm, my records from this show that there was a condition on the special exception, so we make it clear to, and P and Z to send it to R one. R one, R two.
Pardon me.
Is that correct?
Do we have a like, like a plat?
Yeah, we...
There is a concept plan.
Concept plan.
Mr. Ferry, are you in the audience?
Yes.
All right, if you'll step forward and state your name and your address, please, and if you could explain some of the, the questions that we have.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you. My name is Richard Ferry. I'm with Spalding Vineyard, one twenty. Our address is two seventy North Jeff Davis, Fayetteville, Georgia. And the, the application went through many different stages and many different people at staff level. But Commissioner, thank you for picking up and putting them both in the same, in the same hearing. I appreciate that. So what we're proposing here is a forty-eight lot subdivision coming off of Vineyard Road about six hundred feet east of the intersection of Steel Road. Although our property touches Steel Road, we will have no access to Steel Road. We're only, only requesting the access on Vineyard. This subdivision is forty-eight lots. The lots vary in size from one acre to one point six acres. They will be, they will be served by public water and onsite septic. As you can see, we, we've done the, the, the level-one soils. And as we go into the preliminary plat and construction phases, we'd be having to go to a level-three soils and make sure that, that those are all tightened up to make sure the onsite septic works. As an amenity, we're having, offering three amenities, and we follow the idea of, of the pickleball is, is more popular than tennis, and we find that that is a, a much more popular way to go. So we're putting pickleball on the, on the property. We're putting a playground. And in the recommendation by staff to the Planning Commission, they wanted, they specified the number of items, and we acquiesced to that number of items. And then we're gonna do a walking trail around the, the lake. And so the lake, it'll start at the amenities and then circle the lake and connect back to the road. In the, in the conditions, well, I'm sorry, one more item. In this, we, we kept fifty-three acres of, of the property into open space. And as I mentioned, this was quite confusing, the process of what we're actually asking for. I understand that puts us into the forty percent level, that puts us into a conservation subdivision. So I don't know if that's really the request, but we've gone down that road of getting to that point, if that's the recommendation that we end up using. And I don't know if that helps your R one question or not, but I'll let you all figure that out. I think the, the important part about our open space is that, that, that all of our open space focuses on the amenities going into the pond, going into the, the wetlands, and that floodplain that comes out of the wetlands, we are not touching. So you asked a question earlier of, of a different project about the, about the floodplain. We're not, we're not getting into that area at all. We're keeping that open as, as open space. There were a couple of items that I needed, just a little clarification on. One being the, the setback. In one of the, the recommendations, it said it would be a hundred-foot setback. However, it said if the front, if the yards are sodded, it would be a fifty-foot setback. One of the requirements from, from the staff was that, that it would be sodded. So would that require the fifty-foot setback? I, I just need some clarification on that. And then the other, the other item, I had not heard it on any of the other hearings this evening, is that only twenty-five permits could be, could be purchased per year? Just wondering why that, why that one got, got put on, and I hadn't seen that one prior in, in my discussions with any of the previous staff. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them also.
Is that on the report?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
It's condition number nine.
Can, can we clarify the R one issue? Planning Commission on April the twenty-sixth proposed the condition, and they approved the condition, that minimum house size will be two thousand square feet of heated space, which is the R one minimum.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I agree to that.
Right, so the, what, it's in the staff report correctly. It's just that the actual motion from Walter Cox was to zone R one at that minimum. So that's the reason I was raising the question.
Okay, so this-
What's the whole purpose behind number nine? That you can't, don't you have to get a building permit for each property that you, each house that you build?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. The reason for the, for the limitation on the number that they could build annually is to give us an opportunity as staff to manage any mitigation fallout from any wetland encroachment. And to balance that with staff, with staff availability right now.
So, so I understand what you're saying, but I feel like that's putting a hardship on the developer because we don't have our stuff together. I mean, I know we don't have our stuff together because of staff.
Yeah.
But I don't know that we've ever done that to anybody before and I'm not good with-
It actually makes sense to me.
Well, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but they're obviously would be interested in building, building out to whatever level they can. But because we don't have enough people to run behind them, we're, and we didn't do that to anybody else. So I'm just, just trying to understand. I hear you saying the mitigation, but the other, the other development had water issues too and we didn't tell them that. So that's what I'm just trying to understand.
No, if you look at this, there's a, there's a huge wetland here.
I totally understand that and we should, we should deal with that in, in a, a, not a subjective, an objective way.
Yes, ma'am.
But not restrict their ability to develop on the fact that we don't have enough people to do the work.
It's not just us. We're actually contracting out with EHNS for our environmental, environmental health and safety. We're, we're contracting out for EHNS contractors to support us and they are few and far between across the state right now. And we're just trying to make sure that we're not going to overburden not only our staff, but that we don't burden our developer in a way that he has to sit around and wait for us to find another contractor to come and support the effort. We want to support you. We want to make sure that we're supporting the work that you're doing in this wetland because it's a beautiful place and I, I can see that this is going to be a really nice subdivision. But the challenge that we're having right now is locating those, those contractors to support us. With all that's going on inside of our county because of the, that particular area, we're gonna, we're gonna struggle not just here in Spalding County, but across the southern part of Atlanta because of the limited number of people that are available to do this type of inspection.
Again. You're saying a pre-
I, I get it.
You wordsmithed that really good, but at the end of the day, we're making somebody else pay for the fact that we can't do our stuff. Now, on the other hand, I do have some concerns about some of these lots that are clearly in a watering way. And I don't know how they're gonna address that. That would be more of something I think that we, we should be talking about if, for example, lot number, whatever, where it says C two. That's clearly two lots where only maybe twenty percent of one lot is not in a floodplain and not in water.
Kathy, make it bigger if you could. We'll try to get-
Ma'am, if I could, if I could speak on, on where you're talking about, that, those are only soil designations. Those, those aren't water designations. The only water designation is coming out of, if you look on the, just to the south of the pond.
Dark blue is water.
No, 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 those are soils.
No, those are soil types.
That's water. That's the, and then it goes into the pond and then out of the pond.
The, the only, the only water is the, the-
See, I was under the impression that blue was-
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, and I apologize for that.
Blue's a dangerous color on maps, man.
It is. I talked to Paragon about that and it just stayed there. They, they went to a teal color on, on the rest of it.
Alright, so the only thing is where it says pond. That's the only water you're talking about.
We, we, yes, sir, the pond and then as you exit the pond-
What about the little gold part?
That's where I was getting to also. Those, those, that's the spring area we're not, that we're staying out of.
Okay.
So none of the lots-
I'm, I'm good then, if that's not the water.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I appreciate your support on, on that question of the twenty-five. But if I could just bring that up, those twenty-five permits, and to your point exactly, we're not in this wetland putting houses. So our goal here would definitely be preserve those wetland areas, which is our goal and, and what we're showing in this plan. So I don't, I, I just, if I had heard it every time from, in every one of those projects, I would say, whoa, it's just, it's just part of it. It just seemed that this, this was put on, on this project and not on the others. But again, I didn't hear all of the, all of the conditions. So I just want it to be even.
Okay. Alright, ma'am, what do you feel about the twenty-five?
It's, let me just ask one other thing.
Sure.
So on, did we make this map?
No, we did not.
Okay, 'cause I'm just like, I don't know where A one is and C two and F two and then a little legend is like-
Yes, it's very, very small. So what I heard you say, Mr. Ferry, is that Paragon Engineering made this map?
Yes, sir. They, they left the, the colors in that, in that format that they use. And although, all those letters and numbers represent our soil types in a level one soil. And C would be your, your more alternative systems. The white around it, the A one, if you look at lot forty-seven, it says A one on that. That's a, a, a soil that would have a normal septic tank on it. And then you get to the F and F means what it usually means.
Okay.
Means bad soils.
Now that makes perfectly good sense now, 'cause I was just not understanding why you were trying to build a house on water.
No, I appreciate that and I, I wondered the same why those colors were used and we should have. I saw on the other map that had the, they just didn't put colors on it. This is just what Paragon does.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
We've already got a motion.
Yeah, pardon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's, let's make certain-
No, we do not have a motion.
I don't think you have a motion.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
I did already, but-
Okay, hang on.
Hold on just a second. Let's make certain that we are clear that if you, if the motion is to include the staff's recommended conditions and the Planning Commission's recommendations or conditions, let's make clear that we're tying, we're rezoning it to R one and let's tie it to the site plan again.
Well, the recommendation from P and Z was to rezonate to R one because of the, the size of the house.
That's correct. Everybody's agreed that the minimum house size will be two thousand square feet. So the appropriate zoning district with a two thousand square foot heated space minimum is R one.
Okay. Alright.
So that's a condition.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alright, we have-
I'll, I'll change my motion. I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-two zero eight S and application.
Whoa, whoa, let's do one motion.
We're doing it time? Okay, I thought we were gonna do them all together, but okay. Approve application twenty-two zero eight S with staff recommendation, which also includes zoning to R one to tie to the site plan.
And Pl- Planning Commission recommendation.
And Planning Commission recommendation.
And tie to the site plan.
Second. Alright, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Yes. Is, is this a conservation subdivision?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it gonna be, so there will be side for, four-foot sidewalks within the development? And the only road frontage we're gonna have is on to Vineyard Road.
Yes, that's correct.
And your actual, well, will your actual, any of your actual development be on Vineyard Road? Because it looks like there's some, oh, I just can't even tell what that is. What is, what is that? Is that somebody's house right there in regular life?
I think that's, I think those are other parcels.
Okay, that's not your parcel.
We, none, none of ours will have driveways that access Vineyard Road now.
Okay.
So this one had, like, part of the yard, but the driveway's gonna be from this side? So that's, that's-
So this is his parcel?
Yeah, just that one lot will touch Vineyard, but you'll still have to come in and then turn your driveway in.
Okay, so you need to put some sidewalks in front of that one parcel.
Yeah.
We, there need to be consistent.
Okay.
Okay, I think you, Ms. Johnson, you amended your-
I did.
Okay, thank you. Did you get that, the sidewalks?
Yes.
The sidewalk, okay.
The sidewalks are actually condition number seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yay.
Alright, do I, did I have a second?
Yes.
You did.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Point of amendment procedure, Mr. Chair.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Number nine, are we striking number nine?
We have not.
This is on eight S.
We have not.
We haven't got that.
We have not struck, okay.
Alright, so, number eight.
No, no, twenty-five.
No, nine.
She, she did not exclude that in her motion.
Okay.
It's part of it.
Thank you, so we are going with the, no more than twenty-five permits.
Yep.
Because the county can't, ain't got nobody to work for.
The world, the world doesn't have anybody to work for.
The world, that's true, the world.
Sorry.
Alright.
It's getting a long time.
Anything else? Everybody square now? Alright, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number nine's passed. Item number ten, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, motion to approve with the previous additional conditions.
Same, same conditions as on the previous.
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Both motions pass. Thank you. Alright, item number eleven. Application twenty-two zero dash zero three Zulu High Falls sixteen LLC owner and Falcon Design Consultants LLC, excuse me, agent parcel twenty, two hundred, two hundred and eighteen zero two zero one zero, two, two one eight zero two zero one one and two one eight zero two zero one one kilo, approximately three hundred and forty-eight point five six acres located in land lot eighty-two and eighty-three of the third land district requesting a rezoning district in compliance with the Arthur K. Bolton overlay. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're going from R two to-
Yeah, from AR two to PID, Arthur K. Bolton. The application proposes to develop a planned industrial district in compliance with the Arthur K. Bolton overlay. Alright.
Ms. Kathy, will you please pull up the, um, concept plan, please, or color rendering, pardon me?
The, yeah, I only have one.
Okay, so this is the concept plan that we requested that shows all the natural features on it. The two things that I want to point out is that we did, this is a, this is gonna be a warehouse distribution center with multiple buildings on it. There are already inquiries being made on this. It has gone through the DRI process with full approval. There were no comments returned on the DRI. Staff has, has been working pretty hard on this one in terms of the, the creeks that you see on the property. So one of the things that we have worked diligently with the, with the property owner and also with the developer is if you will look at the building, the, the building two, because of the stream encroachment, the, the creek that is on that property. Ms. Kathy, if you can blow it up just a little bit?
Oh, yeah, I see. Right between three and one.
There you go. Yes, sir. The, the creek that runs between building one and building three. The real, original site plan that they gave us is configured a little bit differently. And after working with the client, we have, we've come to an agreement on this building, the buffer that is between the industrial property and the property where it says emergency access, that property is actually still zoned agricultural. The agreement that we have come to so that we don't encroach, encroach on the stream, on the creeks that are on that property in any way, so that we avoid that encroachment, is a screening requirement, a fifty-foot buffer with a screening requirement in it. This gives them, this, this gives them this development without encroaching on any type of stream buffer and keeps the core out of our backyard.
You like that?
I do too.
How, so you're saying that the, that is the end of the stream between building one and three?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, I mean, how does, you just stop water? I mean, is, is it just stopped there? Does it start there?
I believe it has to do with the drop on the property. However, Mr. Adams is here to represent as the applicant and he can speak better to that with his vast engineering knowledge.
Okay.
Yep.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Doug Adams, two thirty-five Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, three oh two eight one. We are excited about this project. To speak to your question, that is the upper reaches of the stream. That's where it starts. That's where the springhead is.
Okay.
So there's, there's, there is no upstream water from there.
Okay, I was wondering if, why, why we think it's just gonna stop at the hill.
Right, right. So, so we, our idea is to come off Highway sixteen. There's a full interchange there with left turn lanes, right turn lanes, stacking distance. Georgia DOT has looked at this and agreed that when Arthur K. Bolton Parkway was built, that there would be a limited number of curb cuts. We're not asking for any more, but their Georgia DOT is requiring that the curb cuts exist to be the only ones that I guess will ever be permitted, at least in the near future. So what's gonna happen on that road, you can, you can ride up and down the road and see it today and there won't be any more. So they're, they're significantly restricting what can happen on Highway sixteen just to those curb cuts.
Where, where is that coming in? What road is that what you'd be coming off to get into there?
That's Highway sixteen.
I mean, so you obviously-
It's like a weird little access road. It's just a access pit and a side.
That little frontage thing, you gotta go up in there to get where you're trying to get to.
Right.
Because it's coming right off.
It's just east of the High Falls red light.
But we will come, we will come in at a ninety-degree angle, come straight in.
Straight through. They don't have to go the cul-de-sac.
Straight up into the property.
Okay.
We will, we will build a parkway that goes up and has a cul-de-sac. And off that cul-de-sac, we will build a, a road out to High Falls Road that will not have truck traffic on it. It'll be for emergency access only. In, in some of our discussions that, that staff and, and the administration here has sat in on, it was brought up, not, not required, but requested that there was a need for a fire station site in that area. So we gave, we're gonna donate an acre over on the, I guess that'll be the southeast corner there on High Falls Road. You know, at, for public safety, just at the, at the-
Thank you.
At the wish of the county there. And if it never gets built, it's okay. If it gets built tomorrow, it's okay. But there's no, you know, there's no strings attached to any expectation there.
We usually always get like five acres for our station. I don't know where, where y'all got that from.
You're, you're usually having to pay for them, though.
Yeah, 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 that's true too. Let me back up a little bit here. I try.
So we're asking for, for there to be multiple buildings here at about four point three million square feet. That will have a, a taxable base of around three hundred million dollars plus whatever the automations and, you know, robotics that are inside the buildings. It, it'll be a significant tax base. It'll be a significant job creator. This will be Class A, like Wall Street-type construction. We're not asking to do metal buildings or sort of, you know, more, more mom and pop construction. This will be all Class A space and we've worked with staff and look forward to any questions that you might have.
So I'm the, the member of the Development Authority here on the board and we have, right on the road from this, obviously, is all of our industrial parks. Our crowning achievement there is the lakes at Green Valley and it's a green industrial park. And the people that have come in next to it and rezoned industrial have added all the requirements from our green industrial park, which aren't arduous. But, but they, they, they exist. They are more than nothing, so that they're also green. And that's our hope that everyone else will sort of comply so that we can have even green warehousing and the like. Companies are coming here and utilizing our spaces because it's green. And so they might get a, a better deal somewhere else that could have saved money somewhere else, but they're coming here because it's green. So I hesitate to use the words, they're paying more for the green, but in, in effect on bottom lines, that's, that's what happens. And so I don't know how, what y'all plan to do to, to be in line with that, but I'd, I'd love to hear some more information as far as that goes.
We would hope that those requirements would not be placed on us. We're very familiar with the property next door to you. The piece you started on with the industrial piece that is, is, the green lakes, started with natural lakes that were already there. Most of what's there is manufacturing. The piece next door has streams and creeks all over it to where it's gonna be more smaller, fifty thousand to one, two, three hundred thousand square foot facilities, which more is in line with manufacturing-type distribution and warehousing. These are much bigger concrete tilt-up buildings. Now certainly, we have a whole bunch of green space. Um, now certainly, we have a whole bunch of green space to the, I guess that would be to the north. And, and yes, there are creeks and wetlands and whatnot, but we intend to stay out of them completely. So, we, we will have a, a whole bunch of green space, but, um.
I, I, you might be misinterpreting what the, the green requirements are. Their requirements are things like discharge and exhaust and stuff, you know? And if you're not manufacturing, I think it would be even easier for you to meet those requirements than for them. So, but then you get to say, we're green warehousing, as opposed to, uh, like, again, those requirements aren't water runoff and green space. Those requirements are like.
Lead certification.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of what we're doing will pass lead certification. We also are involved in River Park, the, the industrial project over on seventy-five and sixteen. Um, it's, it's been super successful as far as Fortune One Hundred companies come in there. Um, I mean, household names. And, um, they, they, you know, we started in one direction there and they have totally not pulled us to another direction, but pulled us more toward what corporate America is expecting, especially from a Wall Street institutional Class A facility. And, um, we're, we're plenty willing to do that here because that's, that's, that's what they're asking for. I'm not saying we can't look at green and being more greener, but everybody there is lead certified.
Uh, again, the, that's, that's the requirements, essentially. Uh, so, it.
But they're not in our industrial park.
Sure.
This is a totally separate industrial.
I think what you have in Green Lakes and what we're trying to do, the client is a little different because of the overall size of the building and just about everything there is manufacturing. We're not up to speed with it like you are, but the piece next door, we've worked on that and, and we're gonna buy it. We're not gonna buy it, looked at it, thought about it, and just because of environmental issues, we just couldn't make it work. And in the environmental issues where you have so many creeks and wetlands and streams and waterways, you have to do smaller buildings which are more geared to manufacturing.
Have, have y'all spoken with our industrial authority about this?
We've spoken with David Lucky several times, yes, sir. And we're not opposed to, to, you know, to checking into this more.
I mean, I'd like it to be checked into before we do something.
Yeah, let's, let's move along with that and Kelly, look at it and see if there's an issue that we need to back, back out. We would prefer, you know, that we can get into, uh, lead or whatever it is all the time, that we can talk Arthur K. Bolton on the green side.
Well, a lead-certified building has more to do with the construction of the building than the park. I mean, it's the materials you use. It's basically gearing toward clean water, clean air, trying to reduce emissions and that type thing. Really has very little to do with the actual development, lands, land.
Which, which again is why I, it's, it's weird that you would buck at it. The idea is, I think this would add value to your property and wouldn't interfere with what you are trying to do. If it would interfere, then I, I get why you go, wait, wait, I don't want those restrictions. But it sounds like, even though you don't want them, that you're still gonna be compliant with them, you just don't want to advertise that it's green. So, maybe we do need to table this tonight so that everybody can go on the same plan with it.
I, I don't, I don't think so, not for me, because we, we, we built an industrial park, it was a green industrial park, and it had a circumference that was the industrial park. The industrial, uh, the Development Authority has run out of land. Our goal is to still bring industry here and to provide that, which, um, obviously, in terms of the, um, air quality and non-attainment zone, this will meet those qualities.
And the adjacent piece to the existing industrial park has agreed to do the green project.
So, and I guess I don't understand what it is that is so special, James, that, that's in our industrial park that you, that we, we need to insert into this. I mean, it's a totally topographical, topographically different piece of property. Um, it looks like they have made accommodations for, for, for stream coverage. Um, I mean, if you drive up Highway one-fifty-five, some of those buildings are huge. I mean, and that's just a different kind of industry. I just, I, I think to, it would be nice if that were something in your business plan, but I don't think this goes against what we already have. And, and, and if David Lucky hasn't indicated that that is something that is a deal-breaker, I mean, I, because I don't know if you're negotiating with them for, for anything. I would be if I was you. I mean, for real, three hundred acres, I mean, you know, so. But, yeah, I, I just, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I'm the same way, I want people to come in green, but I also know that we need industry. And if we're not at the forefront driving the car, which is not our industrial park, then we have to work with the partners that come into the community. That, that's just how I feel.
So, James, you sitting on the Development Authority, have, and I'm sure you all probably heard, heard this, obviously you are.
This, this is literally the first time I've heard it.
It's your first time, so, okay. But you've, you've been in, so you've been in communication with Mr. Lucky about this?
We've been working on this project for eight months with, with Spalding County.
Okay, all right, so.
With Spalding County.
David Lucky's been to two or three of the meetings. I, I, I mean, this is, this has been going on for a while. We've, we've actually put this off for lack of advertising or suffering.
That's, that's, that's what I say.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a suggestion, given that this is a construction issue, that the specs of what L-E-E-D certifications that they are installing have its own spec sheet in the construction plans? Not that it be a requirement of the development, but they submit those to us as, as part of their construction plans.
Let's make it a requirement that they submit the, the plan, uh, bounce, bounce it off, uh, and not make it a requirement that they have to do them at this point.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir, that they just, that they disclose those.
Yes.
Can I, can I, can I add one thing? Almost all of these bigger Fortune Five Hundred, whatever, companies that are coming to do the, um, you know, the, the Wall Street Class A-type buildings, nearly all of them are gonna come to the county, to the Industrial Authority, and talk about job creation and tax abatement and all the different things that they do. And to me, that's a discussion to have at that point, because, I mean, we literally are, are moving dirt, building roads, you know, working around wetlands, stream buffers, that type thing. And the type construction, um, a, again, Class A has a list of things that we do with it. I, I mean, personally speaking, I would be happy to use the River Park list of development agreement with development specifications, because it's working and the people like it and it meets what Wall Street's looking for. And, um, i- i- I would even be happy to insert those in as a list of, um, development standards if, if, if that would help.
My recommendation is, is just to disclose them. I don't have a, a threshold, I'm not recommending any kind of, um, that it has to fully meet L-E-E, L-E-E-D certification. My, my request is simply that it be disclosed. That way, that way, if it, if it exceeds overly and abundantly, and, and I don't know if you can grow Brussels sprouts out of the walls, but honestly, if it exceeds it, it's a selling point for us.
Right.
If it doesn't, we've still got a Class A, Class A facility that we can market in our, in our city, or in our county.
Okay, I'm okay with that. That, all right, you okay with that? All right, do I have a motion?
I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. Keith Duncan? All right.
He had a medical emergency and had to leave.
Okay. Mr. Russ Bolton?
Hollins Bolton? Please state your name and address.
Yes, Russ Bolton, one-fifty-five Buck Snort Road. Uh, my mom, Robin Bolton, is here tonight, she owns one-fifty-five, uh, with me. Um, and we have nineteen hundred feet on, uh, that property line on the northeast corner. Um, I also have one-fifty-seven Buck Snort Road. And, uh, my sister, Brooke, uh, Bolton Storts, and my uncle, Wiley King, own, uh, two-seventy Bailey Gesture. So, those are three contiguous parcels that form four-hundred-and-forty-one acres. Um, between the three of them, uh, well, I'm, I'm sorry, my grandfather, uh, Dr. William King, uh, purchased all these back in the fifties and sixties. And I just want to tell you a little bit about our, our ties to Spalding County. Um, so, my granddad, who I just mentioned, he came to Griffin in nineteen forty-eight. He opened a medical practice and he was a general surgeon here for forty-four years. And throughout his time as a surgeon, as well as for the rest of his life, he was, uh, extremely active in the community. Uh, he's, was recognized many, many times for his service and his leadership. My mom was a nurse at Spalding Regional for thirty-four years. Uh, my father, David Bolton, was a third-generation owner of Griffin Hardware until he passed in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, Arthur K. Bolton was my great uncle. So, you know, we're very familiar with Spalding County and Griffin and, um, and we love it here. And, you know, we, we get the whole, we've been waiting for decades for the sprawl to come from, from Henry County to come south, right? We thought it was gonna be here twenty years ago and it's finally, it's finally here. And, you know, w- what we hope is that the county is selective about what they allow to come in, uh, because y- you want to preserve the beauty and the attractiveness of the area, not only for future potential corporate entities, but also people who want to live here. And so, when we look at this, you know, a- all I really see is a gigantic truck stop. Uh, you're gonna have trucks just coming and going all the time. So, you're gonna have noise, that's a big negative for anyone who, who lives there, spends time in that area. You're gonna have constant noise from the trucks. Uh, the traffic is gonna be a monster and it's gonna be, you know, both of these things are, are genies that don't go back in the bottle. And so, you know, I, w- we just really, uh, really don't like this idea. Um, there's obviously a lot of other things you can do with, with, with properties. We'd be supportive of a residential development with some estate-sized lots. Uh, we'd be open to industrial or commercial applications where, you know, the primary course of business does not involve trucks, just non-stop coming and going. Um, so, what, what we respectfully ask is that the board say no to this. And I appreciate y'all's time very much.
Thank you, Russ. Okay. Anybody else to speak?
No, no one else has signed up, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a motion?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to, um, approve application twenty-two dash oh-three C. Um, High Falls sixteen LLC owner and Falcon, and Falcon Design Consultants. Um, with the recommendations as presented by staff numbering, how many was it?
Uh, we have twelve to include the, um, the fifty-foot buffer on the rear with the screening requirement.
So, is that fifty-foot buffer, is that under served?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with those requirements, um, as recommended by staff.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Is, is there a, uh, condition about as far as like, or something requiring them to put the lights down, you know what I'm saying? As opposed to like general blasting lights, so the lights don't impede into the neighboring lots?
Um, number ten is on noise, if you want to put noise and lighting.
Yeah, I think so.
I, I think part, is a part of our requirement that, that industry has dark-skylighting?
It has.
That doesn't encroach onto a, a adjacent property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, we don't need to put it. I'd, I'd like that specified.
Okay.
So, I, I, I make a motion to amend, to include a special condition that it's dark-skylighting that does not encroach into neighboring.
Okay, we gotta withdraw the motions made if you're gonna make a motion.
All right, no, I can make it.
He, he can make an amendment and they can.
And then we, we have to vote on the amendment and then we vote on the, uh, the.
Correct. That's correct, the amendment will need a second, I believe, though.
All right, do I have a second on that amendment?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for amendment. All those in favor signify by.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five-zero, all right. Now, we're back to, uh, the original, uh, motion and second. Any last-minute discussion?
The original motion as amended.
As amended, yes, excuse me.
Okay, so she wins.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five-zero. Are we all square with this?
We are.
Okay, wanna make sure, all right. Item number twelve. Uh, application twenty-two dash zero-eight Zulu, Reese.
Correction, Mr. Chair, it's zero-seven Zulu, my apologies.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-two zero-seven.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, that is the case number, is, is rezoning twenty-two zero-seven Z, I apologize.
Okay. Uh, Bruce Tracy Gann, owner, South Tree Commercial Agent, seven-seven-eight-one Noonan Road, approximately nine-point-six-two-five acres located in landlot fifteen of the first land district, requesting a modification on a zoning condition imposed in application seventeen dash zero-six Zulu to seek a driveway approval from Georgia Department of Transportation on Highway sixteen.
Okay, this was originally, um, recommended to go after GDOT, to give them a curb cut on Highway sixteen, and they went to GDOT, they went through the whole process with GDOT, all of the paperwork, all of the drawings, all of the renderings, all of the process with GDOT, and GDOT said no. So, what they did was come back to staff, and we've worked on this extensively, um, both with the, uh, construction, um, company and also with the applicant, to look at this and figure out a way to get them access to this, this, um, lot. It is currently zoned C-one-B, which is very appropriate for the use. However, it is surrounded by agricultural uses. And, um, on the other side of the property facing eighty-five connector is, um, commercial uses. So, one of the things that we, we've talked about is paving the road, paving Buck Snort Road, putting in the XL-DL lanes. Part Buckeye Road.
Okay.
Everything in Spalding starts with a B, everything in, in Rockdale starts with an S, so, great, here we go. Um, so, Buckeye Road, pardon me, um, and thank you for the correction. Uh, the lot, the, the lot as it's been submitted, um, we've recommended that there be, um, some screening because of the use. The use is a, uh, landscape supplier, um, uh, with mulch, uh, different rock materials, that sort of thing. We want to let them have the outdoor storage. However, we have put several conditions on it to include a, um, a fit, an additional fifteen-foot buffer in the rear of the property against the, the, um, lower, what just happened? Oh, okay. Um, against the, uh, less intense commercial use that's on the rear of the property. And we've also recommended some screening against the agricultural uses to ensure that, um, if you've ever been by one of these sites, they typically are industrial areas and highway, highway-type corridors. We want to make sure that we're protect, we're protecting that, um, that less intense use of agricultural uses. Um, so, those are the primary goals in what we have recommended. Um, I do welcome any questions from, on the board at this time.
Yes.
So, the front of the property as it will become on Buckeye Road is, is highly forested.
Um, but, before we go too much further, can I get Ms. Kathy to bring up the concept plan, please? Just, just so we're, we're comparing apples to apples here.
Okay.
Um, because I must commend them, it's, it's a pretty good concept plan for what it is.
Which one is it?
Uh, it should be in.
Area map?
I don't think it's in the area, I think that's what she just pulled up. Is it not, is the concept plan not in here? Look at the application, Ms. Kathy, let's see if it's there. I think it is, too, I hope it is.
Is it one of those on the?
Eva to the rescue, always.
Yeah, thank you.
There is a plot in the application.
Yep.
Yes. Woo, thank you, ma'am. All right, so, what, what this is, is if you, um, the yellow area is where they're proposing to pull their trucks in and give them access to the rear of the building, my understanding, I'm sorry. The applicant is here if you want to explain this.
Name and address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Steve Goulis, um, Sa- uh, South Tree Commercial Construction, two-zero-one Prospect Park, Petri City.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, we, um, we spoke to Public Works today and we spoke to Ms. Littlefield a little while today. And, um, we're still kinda going through a couple of things, because we learned something else from Public Works today. So, it actually may be best to table this and let us get with our civil engineer based on what we learned with Public Works and what we, um, what we, what we're trying to understand regarding a DSLA requirement.
Enough. Motion to table.
I would, I would, I would kinda like to talk through a couple of things, though, because there's, there's a, because we're basically, there's, there's thirteen items on this, uh, list and we're good with most of. and we're good with most of them. Basically, what we're trying to do is drop one condition off of the C-one-B zoning. So, back in two thousand seventeen, this was zoned C-one. And this is before I was involved. The application was to rezone it to C-one-B to allow the outdoor storage, which is what the B part does. The, Ms. Littlefield is correct that GDOT met with our civil engineer and they thought everything was good line-of-sight-wise, but then when they went through the full drawing process, spent ten thousand dollars doing all the drawings, then we submitted it. They changed their mind and said, no, we don't believe there's a good enough line of sight, given this. There's a roundabout. You're kinda crunched between the roundabout and Buckeye Road there. So, they said, no, you can't do it. So, I looked at the meeting minutes for their, I was hoping it would say that, you know, as a condition, you have to use Highway sixteen as an entrance if GDOT would allow you. Unfortunately, I was going through this with Ms. Debbie that was here before, even before Brad, and it didn't say those words. It just said you had to use Highway sixteen. So, given that, it was like, okay, we have to go back before the commission because we can't go on sixteen. So, GDOT said you're gonna have to use Buckeye Road or Tri-State Road. There was somebody in the northeast corner that has C-one zone property, but it's used as a house, that didn't really want us to use Tri-County Road. So, we were like, okay, let's try to just use Buckeye Road as the entrance. So, and the driveway needs to be a hundred feet away from Highway sixteen. That's a GDOT rule. Anytime you put a driveway in, you have to go a hundred feet down the road. I took a stab at drawing something today. Our civil engineer's out of town today. I was able to talk to him very briefly this morning, but haven't talked to him lately. He hasn't even seen this drawing yet, actually. But I'm just kinda, was trying to brainstorm with Public Works and with Ms. Littlefield as to what we could do. So, they, we were informed for the first time today that the forty-foot right-of-way that's there currently for Buckeye Road, which is a gravel road, one-lane gravel road, would actually need to become seventy feet. When I talked to the civil engineer just very briefly today, he goes, oh, I don't know about seventy. He goes, I know of a sixty, but I don't know of any seventy. And we didn't expect that. So, we kinda need to huddle up and go through the land development regulations as it applies to improving a gravel road and see if it really would be that seventy feet. And then on the DSA lane, we'd have to see if that's really needed. So, we're kinda stumped by the DSA lane and for a couple of reasons. One, we've put in lots of DSA lanes, but we put them in to either slow a high, slow down for a high-speed traffic. If you're going from fifty-five miles per hour, you need to slow down. We're expecting that this would probably be twenty miles per hour and not need a DSA lane. And the only other reason you put a DSA lane in is to get traffic out of the way. So, you get traffic, you know, going to the DSA lane so that the through traffic can continue on. In this case, there is no continuing on. So, I asked Mr. TJ Imberger today if there's a chance that Buckeye Road is ever gonna be extended into Fayette County. And he said, no, there's no plans of that. So, given that the, if a pickup truck comes in, which ninety percent of the vehicles that come into this property are gonna be pickup trucks, I've learned from our clients, maybe even ninety-five percent, almost everybody's pickup trucks, like I drove here today. The person behind them would likely be going into the same DSA lane. So, it's not like the truck would get out of the way so that a vehicle could continue on to Tri-County Road. The, nobody really wants to use Tri-County Road, apparently, and nobody along there wants to be used. So, we wanna study that, whether or not this is really needed by talking, we'd love for you all to talk to, for instance, the county engineer. I like to talk to our civil engineer about it some more, see how that implements with the extra right-of-way that would be needed to be given. I mean, my thinking right now is that we give thirty extra feet of right-of-way if that's what the development regulations require, but really study whether or not we need this DSA lane. So, that's the main reason I'm thinking that it's probably best to table it. Most of these items are fine. I do wanna talk about a couple, a couple of things on here. There's a fence requirement along Tri-County Road. I went back over there today because it's been some months before I've been there and I wasn't a hundred percent sure about something. I was bringing up that there's actually a power line easement that's kind of up near Tri-County Road. Turns out there actually is a line of trees. So, here's the line of trees that's next to the easement. So, between Tri-County Road and the power line easement is this line of trees. So, I don't really think a fence would, we'd be putting that fence in the tree line. What we'd like to propose instead is that everywhere in between the trees, we put like a shrub. So, you know, you got tree, 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 tree. We put shrubs in there to kinda infill any gaps. Because I think it would actually look better for anybody. There is a house to the north of Tri-County Road, but I drove by it today and it has no doors and windows. It's an old abandoned house that has not been lived in in a very long time. And so, if it ever got rebuilt or something, I think it would be better to look at a wall of green than look at a fence, that a fence like a privacy screen fence. So, that's a request. We'd love to get any feedback from you on that so that when we come back next month, we have that the way that you all would want it. And then regarding the buffer on the right-hand side, I drew in green, I infilled the fifteen feet that's there. It says fifteen-foot side setback. I can understand Ms. Littlefield's concern about wanting some additional. So, is there already a fifteen-foot landscape strip requirement and then, and then we're gonna be adding that? Or is there zero landscape? Because it's commercial next to commercial, so there's technically zero right now.
Mr. Goulis, if you don't mind, since we're gonna table it this evening, if we can schedule some time with Ms. Littlefield, we can get all of those questions answered for you and help us get prepared for the next meeting. Would that be okay?
That'd be great.
Awesome. All right. So, I think you have a, awesome. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kelly, that's work with you and.
Yes, sir.
TJ, thank you. Okay. Item number thirteen. SD twenty-two dash zero-two, Joseph Elder and Robert McDonough, owners, two-ten Field Road, approximately a hundred and six point four oh-one acres located in landlot nine of the fourth land district, requesting approval of an eighteen-lot final plat. Ms. Littlefield.
These, so, Ms. Kathy, if I can get you bring a plot, please. Final plot. This is a, this is an AR, AR-one zoned property. And they are wanting to, go ahead and scroll down. There we go. So, what they're wanting to do is subdivide this along the creek, it looks like, that's there. And all of the lots will have road frontage unto themselves. There is no curbing out there. This is a rural road. All of the roads are. So, there's no curb cuts to be had. The subdivision, it's not a subdivision per se, but it is a subdividing of lots. Each of the lots are at least three acres. They all have a two-hundred-foot road frontage and it is a single-family development.
Is it more than five properties? So, that makes it a subdivision.
Right, but in terms, pardon me?
A minor subdivision.
A minor subdivision. Yes.
All right. Is there somebody to speak on this?
There is not.
Okay.
Do they have, this was an issue that came up before, do they have the necessary fire hydrants and stuff?
Those are. I wanted to say that, yes, this was approved by the fire marshal.
So, yeah, I guess the question is, are the fire hydrants five hundred feet apart or are they a thousand feet apart?
Five hundred, right.
Or fifteen hundred?
When it's five hundred, that's our rule.
It's five hundred. Lot safety case, it's five hundred.
My concern is that, I guess this is supposed to be one subdivision, but these are not two contiguous pieces of property. It doesn't look like. There's a third piece that separates these two. I'm just trying to figure out how.
The same one as like last thing.
Yeah. I have a concern about the road cuts. I'm trying to really, I see Steel Road and I see Field Road. I guess the entryway would be on Field Road?
Each lot has its own access.
Yeah, there's no road. It's just curb cuts existing.
Right, but the access would be to where? I mean, entryway off Steel Road? Wait a minute, hold on. I'm looking.
If they fronted, if they front on Steel Road, they'll have a driveway. If they front on Hammond, they'll have a driveway on Hammond.
So, I have a problem with so many curb cuts. I felt like we were trying to get away from having multiple curb cuts so with, you know, so that it'll not impede traffic on the road. These are all two hundred, looks like two hundred-foot frontage.
All these roads are really residential, though. Like, they're not like travel. I mean, a lot of people travel steel, but it's because their driveways are all on steel. You know what I mean? Like, it's.
I agree in concept, but I think these are such a small roads that the curb cuts doesn't matter.
So, they're actually on Hammond Road, Steel Road.
County Line Church and then Field Road.
County Line Church Road has two.
That's how I see it.
Three.
One, two.
There's a lot that fronts on Field Road and also on County Line Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Their driveway access, though, would be Field Road. I believe that's proposed to be addressed to Field Road.
And Field's a dirt road, right?
Uh, it's not as wide as the other roads. I do know that. I have not driven this area.
And we're, and we're, but these all stay AR-one?
Yes, sir.
It's minimum three-acre lot. They made that and they made the design requirements.
Is that a stream bed going through there? I mean, it's not colored blue, but, you know, I'm just asking.
I think that is a stream.
Actually.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion on the table.
But not seconded yet.
I know.
I motion to approve.
All right. James made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yes. I'm just a little concerned about.
Curb cuts?
Yeah, curb cuts and a creek going through both. How do you have one subdivision on two parcels?
It's two, it's one parcel. It's not contiguous. I do not know how that happened. It was definitely not under this planner. However, what I can tell you is that this is your least intense use as far as development goes besides passive or conservation. In terms of the impact on the creek, there is a minimal impact on a three-acre lot on those creeks.
And if you treated them as two different tracks, you would still have the same design and the same requirements.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, technically, I just never, in my brain, how can you have one track when you got two tracks? I mean, I know you don't have the answer to that, but I'm just, twice in one night is just way more than I'm prepared.
People in the seventies weren't really good at this. I don't know.
I would submit to the board, though, that this does consolidate, in this particular case, it does consolidate the issue of the two separate tracks by dividing it into eighteen.
By doing what?
Dividing it into eighteen. It completely eliminates the uncontiguous tracks. Problem solved in this case.
All right. Any more comments? More discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait, sorry. Did you say anything about square footage?
They're AR ones.
They're AR-one lots.
Okay, okay.
It would follow AR-one zoning. We didn't put any additional, we did not put any additional conditions on it because that is your least dense. It is your least impact. It is your largest square footage. They have plenty of space to put an accessory structure. It doesn't, it has minimal impact to that creek and everybody gets their own driveway so that nobody's driving their tractors across their neighbor's field.
So, nobody's here to speak against this?
No, ma'am. And we have not had any public comment to the adversary.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number fourteen. Consider approval of the Vineyard Park.
Uh-oh, we're getting handouts. Oh.
Keep reading.
Thank you. Consider approval of the Vineyard Park subdivision final plat located at parcel two sixty zero-six zero-zero-eight, approximately ninety-one point four-one acres located on landlot thirty-seven of the third district, consisting of forty-nine lots. Ms. Littlefield.
All right. So, this is a, Ms. Kathy, if you'll pull up the design concept, please.
If there is an error in the number of lots.
Are we supposed to find it ourselves or are you gonna tell us?
No, we're gonna talk about it. Newton and I are gonna present this together. Mr. Gallo and I are gonna present this together.
How special.
She is infinitely more familiar with this than I am. Staff does recommend approval. There is, like he said, there is a discrepancy in the lots that we discovered. This has been through more than one iteration, from what I understand, in the process. And so, the, I do stand by all of the conditions that were provided and he has something additional to present.
Which I've done, which I've given you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, please.
This subdivision, y'all are familiar with this, was first approved back in two thousand six. And it sat fallow and because of the recession, was never developed. Then, and the subdivision plat was just renewed and renewed and renewed until we changed the ordinance that said after a gazillion times of having your plat renewed, it ended. So, we brought, had them come back. Somehow, a final plat got presented to you that you denied, which shouldn't have been in front of you at that time. So, what we have done with them is start them over on plat approval. And we have gotten a new plat, new plan together with additional conditions on top of what appears in the staff report. Those final conditions are in the document that I gave you. We have negotiated, excuse me, with the developer to reach consensus on these conditions, which results in a reduction of the lots, which allows, without any variances, the houses to comply with the minimum square footage requirements that are set out. And they have agreed to additional design and aesthetics controls that are set out below in the conditions. This is, we, having worked on this, I think this is an appropriate resolution to this. And it preserves the integrity, principally the integrity of the plat that was approved years ago, but at the same time brings it up to speed and understand the way our subdivisions work, just to remind you. In our residential classes, you start with the premise that you're gonna have a two-acre tract. And if you want to go below a two-acre tract, you have to comply with the requirements of the types of subdivisions that are designed, which have design criteria in the zoning ordinance. So, that's what this is doing. That allows them to condense the lots, but it does not affect the density. So, this is about a house to one point one to one point two acres that meet all of the design criteria necessary under that subdivision class. Counsel for the developer is here. Mr. Kincaid, if he would, if you want to call him up.
Before I, before we turn it over to them, staff does have one condition to strike and that is condition nine on the chain link fencing.
That, ten?
Ten?
It's number ten.
Let me see. Our list says ten.
Where was the chain link fencing supposed to be?
No. On the, yeah, on the new one, it's ten.
Okay.
Excuse me.
You're saying, scratch it.
Yes, sir.
Where was it supposed to be?
It's in your staff report that it's nine there. This was revised.
No, but I'm saying, in the development, where was the chain link fencing listed?
Just in general, just in general terms.
On lots.
Just generally on lots. Okay. I don't think chain link fencing's a big deal.
So, is there a requirement for green space in this type subdivision?
Yes, and it's already set out and approved in the plat that was approved in two thousand six.
Is that green space five hundred feet away from every piece, every lot that's in there? Isn't that part of the requirements? Is that if you have a common area?
This meets the requirements for this type of subdivision. Kathy, can you cursor down, please?
Newton, y'all negotiated this extensively. I know that I've spoken with the developers a few times. Good to see you guys. Good to see you guys tonight. Uh, and the last conversation we had was, I'm sure that staff and you guys can work out an excellent resolution. Is that staff's recommendation, this is as excellent of a resolution for this as we're going to get?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
With conditions, with.
With the condition.
With the conditions that are listed here with pulling out number ten chain link fencing.
Let me say that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, do I have a second?
As per Newton.
I'll second.
All right, we're. You want to come forth with the speak, sir? Or do you want us to go ahead and vote?
We certainly appreciate your support and all your time and work in this point and are finding getting rid of the chain link fencing. Thank you.
Thank you for your humor too. All right, any more discussion?
Uh, we're good.
All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand?
Did you need more?
All right, all against? Four, one. All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for what, how long you've spent with us getting this done. We appreciate it.
We'll be proud of the end product. Appreciate you. Have a good night.
Thanks, y'all.
All right. Item number fifteen. Consideration of amendment of the UDO, Article twenty-two D, North Expressway Improvement District Overlay, pre-adoption of ordinance and accompanying overlay.
Uh, no.
This is fifteen?
Moratorium.
That's sixteen.
I thought that is sixteen.
I have it as, I, mine says fifteen, stuff. Maybe I.
Yeah, we got, uh, fifteen's the amendment to the UDO, right?
Yes.
Yes, for the North Expressway. This is the consideration of that, um, that residential overlay. Fisher Galloway, do you?
That's under other business.
The moratorium for me is under sixteen.
Yeah, this is the one I got in the back. You're the chair, you just tell us what we're doing right now.
Item number fifteen. Consideration of amendment of the UDO, Article twenty-two D, North Expressway Improvement District Overlay, pre-adoption of ordinance and accompanying overlay map.
That is because of an advertising issue. That is not ready. And so we have got you an amendment, I'm sorry, a moratorium for a short period of time to get the advertising corrected.
I see, all right.
So you will make, you will not be making a substantive decision on that because it's not in compliance with the procedures.
Okay, let, let me. Do, do we need a motion to table it? Or do we need to just sit?
If you want to have a motion to table, Commissioner, that's fine. That's fine. Uh, let, let me, let me tell you all this. We are working. Ms. Kelly and Ms. Eva are working diligently to get us back up to speed.
Yeah.
And to get these, these applications handled and through to you promptly and efficiently. But there are a lot of loose ends that they've been dealing with. And Kelly has been hit with a number of things unexpectedly, out of the blue, that we don't see regularly to start with, much less if it's your first month on the job. So the advertising for North Expressway just got lost in those loose ends and remains a loose end for thirty days. The ordinance has been done since April.
Wow.
Okay. All right, or thereabouts, close to.
So the north, you're saying the north, the commercial aspect of the Northeast Expressway.
That's in place. That's in place and y'all approved it. Y'all approved that in March. Um, we came back, we held the residential component. And that's now complete, been complete and ready for your vote, but we've got to get it advertised properly.
Okay.
So it will come back to you next month.
Cool, motion table.
In the next item, you should have a moratorium.
Yep. All right, listen, okay, all, uh, do I hear motion to table that one? All right, a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, thank you. All right. Item number six, would I have item number sixteen? Consideration of moratorium on acceptance of rezoning and special applications.
Special exception application.
Uh, motion to approve.
Thirty days.
Yeah, until, until the next meeting when we can approve this.
Now, hold, hold, we're, I think we're talking about two different things here.
Because that moratorium is so that we can have extra time.
Counted wide.
This is a moratorium on everything.
For, for rezoning applications and special exceptions. To give us, give the staff time to get a little bit of breathing room.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was.
All right. And, and give them time to get some breathing room, get the stuff back organized so that we're not, if we are inundated, there's not a pile of pressure on them. We can bring them forward, uh, and bring them without having.
Just, just to explain to you, right now you do not have a, a standard operating procedure, an SOP in place for your community development department. And that's everything from building permits, business license, alcohol license, rezoning, special exception, accessory uses, the whole nine yards. You do not have a process of review on anything but your final plats.
And our business licenses are currently being, uh, housed in paper in three-ring binders. We're getting ready to get into our renewal season and all that goes on in our community development is taking an extraordinary amount of time because of the information that Kelly just shared with you and the lack of systems that are currently in place.
I do not want to, to undermine any of my predecessors whenever I say this, but we've got a lot of work to do to get community development not only up to speed, but competitive with the counties around us.
So I know that there was some SOP because when we've had problems with them not being followed, we had something to go to, to say that they were not being followed. I don't know what happened with that. I mean, if you, if you feel like we need to do something new, fine, but I, I just fail to believe that there has not been some process that has been a regular process in how they have done what they have done. Because o- otherwise we would not have had any checks and balances. Not questioning what you're saying, but you know, when, when you say there's no SOP.
It's been very ad hoc.
It's been more of a tradition than an SOP.
We, we have a problem. She's overwhelmed right now. Question to me really and truly is, are we going to do it thirty days, sixty days, ninety days? Thirty days and come back to us again and tell us if she wants to, needs another thirty days?
This, this not say on, on zoning items. It just says on rezoning and special exceptions. So if someone comes in and has appropriate zoning, then there is no reason why there should be no action. Are you saying that you want no action regard, regardless of what it is? Whether they don't need a special exception, whether they don't need a rezoning change? You know, we need to know specifically.
We're hoping, I'm hoping that some things contin- the big pipe cuts down to small pipe. Some things just flow on through that you can do without a lot of effort. You know, if.
I would request on anything that is, that is more than three lots, anything that is more than a, than, um, a, a one-acre tract of development for commercial and industrial. That, these are the kind of things that my staff is, is drowning in right now. I, I want to be responsive to our residents. I want to be responsive to, to our, our legacy residents. I want to be responsive to that. But right now, my staff is so far behind, they can never die.
So, but you understand that we cannot go indefinitely?
No.
And, and I mean, we just spent nine, ninety, hundred, a hundred and eighty days with a Northeast Expressway moratorium.
All right, let's do thirty days and in thirty days you come back and tell us where you are.
If you need more than you, you can say. So that's all zoning actions.
Yes, ma'am.
What you're saying, not, not just rezoning. So the motion needs to be for all zoning actions.
Shut it down for thirty days.
And permit.
Everybody needs, no, this is, there's going to be some blowback on this.
Oh, yeah.
The banks are going to be uptight. There's going to be a number of items besides just developers that are coming in. We've got to be ready.
Sorry.
I'm not going to be.
We're only going to be what we got.
Yeah, okay. All those, uh, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'm moved. James.
James made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five, zero. I could, I'm sorry, I couldn't say, okay.
Thank you. Truly, thank you.
We have faith in you. You've got to.
You can do it.
So honestly, we'll be looking at sixteen items pretty much for the next few months with these zoning meetings. Are we looking at this like every month they're out?
No.
No.
No. No.
No, we just put a halt on it.
Now we know, we got other business, the other one, we got one more thing to do.
All right. Other business? Item number one, consider request of the right-of-way easement from the Central Georgia, Central Georgia Electric Membership Corporation to allow access to the Aquatic Center location. Dr. Ledbetter.
This is for an easement to bring power on to the property from Rehoboth uh, that will feed our aquatic center. Uh, this easement is for, uh, Central Georgia EMC and staff makes recommendation that we move this forward.
Isn't there already a power line right there?
There's a power line, but the easement is not affording them the opportunity to pull power into the ground and run it to the rear of the building.
Oh, yeah, motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five, zero, thank you, motion carries.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
And do we have, uh, no closed meeting? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? Five, zero, thank you. We're adjourned.
If I see any of them before a month from now.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Haven't even eaten yet. Good job, Kelly.
We will have, um, three applications to be formed that month.
Well, I mean, if we, we do what we do, I mean, I get dressed.
Oh, good. This is what I, just what I live for.
Yes, go ahead and get them out of the way.